Lloyd, she's going to be just a few minutes late. All of the council members are present. At this time, we'd like to invite Councilmember Jensen to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we're going to ask Scott Harrington if he wouldn't mind offering some things. Audience, please welcome.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States for God, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father and Son, we're grateful this time to meet here at this council meeting as staff-elected officials and persons of this community. We're grateful that we have opportunity to discuss the issues that pertain to all of us and have the ability to listen to those that have thoughts and feelings on these issues. We ask that thy spirit be here with us tonight as we do these things and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
May your glory be with you.
Okay, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
We'd just like to move. This is a public hearing, so let's get it out before we do all the number nine action items. The other ones are not public hearings.
So actually, Scott, I don't see number nine tonight. Oh, I see it. Okay, so we'll do it after 8A?
No, sorry. Well, we have a different agenda here. So 10A is action items with public discussion. Did you hear 10A say that?
Yeah.
So we want to move that public hearing up before we do any of the items that are not.
Right, so if we put it right after 8A, will that be okay?
Yes, that's what you were saying.
I think so. You know.
I'll listen next.
I'm a politician, so. Okay, any other changes to tonight's agenda? Yeah, I've got one. During presentations, we need to add an 8B. We invited some of our Pleasant Grove high school sports teams to come. We've had such a great year. We've asked them to be here and to be recognized. And so I've asked three of our council members to help me with the recognition because it works better that way.
And Mayor, not just sports, we ask any group of clubs, we have representatives here in the choir.
Okay, great. Okay, any other changes? Okay, I'll call for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda as written with the addition of item 8B, the presentation of Pleasant Grove sports teams and other groups and choir, and the movement of item 10A appearing on my budget to right after those presentations.
Okay, we'll second that. Okay, we have a motion by, in a second, by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? All right, we'll have an open session now. This is where we have something on the agenda that is not for public discussion or if it's not on the agenda, we'd like to address it. Please go ahead and state your name and address, and we'll hear you at this time.
Jennifer Baptista, 32 North, 1300 East. Jennifer Baptista, 32 North, 1300 East. As you may know, I'm one of the sponsors for the BRT referendum for this county. And a couple of issues have happened in our city that has come to my attention on collecting signatures that I'd like to bring up. For the Fireman's Breakfast, we had permission to collect signatures on the sidewalk outside. I got a phone call that day from several that were collecting signatures, feeling that they were being harassed and bullied by the police officers there and was being distracted and tried to be pushed off the property. And they tried to accommodate all the different suggestions and everything else, but they made it very difficult where they ended up just leaving. And then today, I believe it was today, might have been Friday. What was today? Well, anyways, we have a Bob Webster was down at Ace Hardware. Yes. He was down there collecting signatures. He had permission from Ace to collect the signatures out. He was approached by five police officers and was investigated for being there collecting signatures. So I know if there's an issue with us collecting signatures in our city and if there's a bias because I know that we're hosting a BRT meeting here to give out information for the county on the BRT, which is more of a promotion than an opposition. So I'm feeling like this is kind of a little bit biased within our city. So I would like some answers on that one.
So this is more a question of free speech?
Yes, First Amendment rights, free speech, and a right to collect signatures for a referendum. That's our legal right.
Let's refer this to our city attorney and have her speak to it.
With regard to collecting signatures on the sidewalk, the sidewalk is traditionally a public forum. You are allowed to demonstrate on the sidewalk, hold aside, walk up and down, stand on the corner, people come by and they want to sign your petition or want information about your petition. You're not allowed to block the public right of way in any or obviously harass people who are walking down the sidewalk. I'm not sure what happened at the Fireman's Breakfast. I don't know where the people were. I did get a phone call from an officer who indicated they were not on the sidewalk. They were on public property, and that is not allowed. To have Ace Hardware, I have no idea. That's the first I've heard of it. If they're on private property and they're there by the private property owner's permission, then of course they can ask people as they're approaching the store if they want information or if they want to sign a petition. With regard to renting this space, it is not the county that's renting this space, is my understanding, or using this space. It is the UTA people, is that correct? That who approached us. Anyway, someone approached us.
It's UTA?
UTA, so UTA. And the is is that they have to go through the same procedure to schedule the space as anybody would. If your organization would like to reserve this room to hold an open house on the other side, you're perfectly welcome to do that.
Yeah. Is there a reason why we have multiple cops responding to petition complaint?
I can talk to that. You know, out of all of these, I find it interesting that not one citizen has contacted me with a complaint. On the one at Ace, there, that was called in by a citizen, happened to be a citizen of another city. So the officers responded. They have the duty to respond when there's a complaint called in. That most officers have no idea what the BRT is, and they get a call that they need to go down. I looked into that specific complaint because I did read the email. I think it noted that Mr. Webster said the officers were very professional.
Oh, he's, yeah, because he was really concerned that was five of them.
They were trained a little different than that tonight. So when they went down, there were two officers that had, brand-new officers with them, who are trained. So there's four right there. And then there was another car that came through, and he saw that there were four, and he didn't stop. He never got out of his car. So initially, it's hard to say, you know, here's an incident, and X amount of officers should respond. I think as you look through the nation, look at stats, more officer problems and injuries come when there are not enough officers there. So for me, as a chief to say, here's an incident, on this type of incident, only one guy goes or only two guys go is not appropriate. I think that the most important part of what Mr. Webster is saying is that the officers were very professional with him and treated him with dignity. And they found out what he was doing, said no problem, and cleared the call. Besides that, I have a hard time understanding what he was trying to do.
He just, he just voiced a complaint to me that he couldn't figure out why there was five officers that needed to respond to him.
Well, until they get there, they don't know what they have.
Okay, thank you.
So I received the email from Mr. Webster and forwarded to the chief to investigate. So this is the first I've heard the response now.
Okay.
Because it was a holiday, and yeah, today's our first day back to work. Appreciate that. So just to be clear again, so make sure I understood the second question had to do with tomorrow night, there's a UTA presentation.
Yes.
If people want to give other opinions or collect signatures, they need to stay on the sidewalks. Is that correct?
Correct. If you're looking to have petitions be signed, you need to use the public forum. Our public property is not permitted to be used to influence a ballot proposition, either for or the meeting that's scheduled tomorrow night. Is my understanding, the way they represented it, is an information-only meeting. There's no persuasive information being given one way or the other. And in order to make sure that it was fair and that we weren't opening up a forum to one side and not the other, they went through the process to reserve the room and schedule it. If somebody else wants to reserve the room and schedule it, they're welcome to go through the process.
Okay.
Is who requested that have the meeting?
Here.
So I have a question for Dave, or Chief Thomas. On the morning of the Fireman's Breakfast, or if there was anyone else that could speak to this, were they blocked? Was it blocking entrance? I wasn't sure at the time that this was going on. I just heard from local residents about what could happen. Could you clarify any of that?
I think they involved, other than initially, they were setting up a canopy near the door here in the drive area.
And is that where the line was to go in?
Yes, that's where the entrance was. And we had some officers that were having breakfast, and it was mentioned to them, they walked out, and I think explained to them that they needed to be on public right of way.
Okay, yeah, so setting up by a door is a good idea.
I'd just like to add, Mayor, I mean, if there's specific complaints, I would appreciate the citizens coming and speaking with me. I think the officers are put in a bad situation. What plan is made, they're in a null-and-one situation. Things get politicized, and the officers don't care what a political issue is. They get a call, they have to respond, they get one call. They don't care to hang a label on that and try to say that there's some political issues going on here. I'm part of the police department. They're absolutely as well.
So if, Jennifer, for you specifically, and for anyone else that's contacted by individuals that may want to have some kind of public forum for either distributing information or collecting signatures, that's a First Amendment right. As long as you're on the sidewalks or just answer them, as long as they're on the sidewalks, they just can't obstruct the traffic, the flow of traffic for people. And they can't actually set up like canopies or tables or chairs because that would be blocking the right of way. Totally within their federal rights to be on that sidewalk and exchange information. Okay, anyone else for a public hearing? Or public session, sorry.
Blaine Thatcher, 120 North, 1400 East. I don't know if we're going to have an opportunity. I have a question about item 9A, and I don't know if you're going to take open comment during that. If I will wait. If not, I'd like to ask a question now.
We could have you ask your question now.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just, I'm curious about the process of awarding contracts. It seems to me in other instances, the procedure the city has followed is the contract is required to be awarded to the low bidder if they're deemed qualified. And it appeared to me that the four potential contractors were all deemed qualified, and I'm wondering what the process is.
Okay, I can't speak to that last part about whether it's required to be low bidder or not. I don't know the answer. So I'm going to refer to the staff. But the rest of the process, we had sent out an RFP and staff had helped us prepare that. There were multiple responses. And so we asked the professional staff to help us pare that down to four that responded in a way that we thought they could actually help us with the job. They were required to come and do a walkthrough, and they were available to ask any questions they want. All of that, then we got the four that were presented and interviewed them publicly last week.
Two weeks ago?
Was it two weeks ago?
I think it was two weeks ago.
Sorry, guys. Two weeks ago, we interviewed them, and then a selection was made by the council at that time. So let's address that other issue about.
The state statute gives an exception for professional services. For contractors who are actually building things, we are required to take the lowest responsive bidder. And the way insured quality is being, the bid is described, the qualification of a bid. For professional services, you are not required to take the lowest responsive bidder.
Okay.
That's what I was wondering about. Because I just thought it was interesting that we chose one $10,000 buyer.
Yeah, I think there was a.
Even though they were deemed qualified.
I think there was a specific discussion about that fact. And it's like if, even in my private business, you tend to look at it, and then you wonder sometimes if a person could bid low, eliminated, or omitted some part of the work that was going to be done. In this particular case, one thing I remember was the amount of time they said they could do then was extremely short as compared to the other three bids. So that led to a question. And then on the high side, I think there was also some concern about, well, this one's really expensive. So it was kind of deemed to go with the, one of the two that was in the middle, middle of the pack.
Okay, yeah, it just seemed a bit subjective, knowing that all were deemed qualified, capable, and could beat the requirements of the RFP.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Who's going to add to this one?
Add to it.
Sorry. Don Paulus, 1616 North to 10 East. And so it sounded to me, if I heard right, and I don't do that well at my age, but at least the wife says I don't. But if, so there was some clarification that was needed, do you not then clarify that contract or that, those terms and conditions and go back out for maybe a best and final? No, don't beat around the bush. A straight answer will be fine.
I guess I'm not understanding your question. So there were four firms that met, that met with qualifications.
And one was lower.
One was lower, one was high, and then two in the middle.
Okay.
It is sort of a subjective, subjective decision because after the four gave their presentations, there was one or two that obviously result felt were, would do a better of actually fulfilling the requirements that were posted. And the one that might have been the lowest, as the mayor mentioned, had some gaps in their presentation. And so in, in my opinion, as I listened to them, you know, there was, there was one that definitely had some question as to whether or not they really had the project in. And the other was presented adequately, that they had exactly what the council wanted done.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard said. So, but often in, as a contract manager, often in contracts, there's clarification needs, and you have to go back and forth. And I assume in this particular case, a decision needed to be made based on when out and a fair statement of work went out to each of them, and one didn't meet the statement of work.
Well, the four of them met the statement of work. That's why they were presented to the council. And then when you listen to their presentations, and you start to see a rather large variance of time committed to the project. And I think, I think with the lowest bidder, there was, there was one where they weren't going to really spend a lot of time on one of the buildings. And so you kind of looked at that, looked at what the other people were including, and you see three and one, and you look at that and you say, I don't think this one's going to. You may be paying less, but you may not get the whole work done that you were requesting to be done. And that didn't come out until there was a comparison, ask them questions, dug down a little bit to try to get their, their answers.
And then a decision was made without them having an opportunity to make a best and final or anything.
Correct.
And Tina says we're allowed to do that, a service-type contract.
Professional services.
Okay.
They had an opportunity for us to ask them questions during the presentation. As well, we also receive packets prior to them presenting, which are literally pages of their firm, their experience, what products they have, the questions. But we did have the option to ask them questions during after presentation about quality of work, scope of work, any specifics that we had. So we did do an interview process that we looked at.
Thought you were here and you left early?
I had, yeah.
Okay.
I had to leave early, and so I didn't understand it all. But, okay, you're answering, you're answering my question. You gave them an opportunity. They could have contested it at that time when you were questioning.
Like, okay, you're only saying this is going to take you four weeks or 22 days. You know, that seems very different than six to eight weeks that the other three are proposing. Can you elaborate a little what's missing here?
And I think at that point, they said, I think one thing that stood out is that they were going to use past data. So I didn't feel like their information, they were going to use information or data that they were using off of other, their experience or their information on their projects. And that was shortening their time, which I felt would be, it needed to be someone that was looking totally at our buildings and our vision here. As I recall, maybe I was wrong, but it seemed to me that they were using other data previously.
That was the part that would concern me more, is did they not have a fair, we call them a statement of work. Do they not have a statement of work they were bidding to, and was that right or wrong? But I, but I understand that there's other things you weigh it on, and that's what Christine was saying there. And so what do we call them? Do we call them by the last?
We call it Tina.
Tina. If we're addressing her, if you want to be really formal.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else?
So my name is Molly Andrew, 1107 Nathaniel Drive. And I am your normal housewife. I am a mother of four. I have three boys and a daughter. And I got in everything here. And it's like this huge pot that everybody keeps stirring. And I got some good advice from somebody who said to verify information. And so today on Facebook, I saw this cool new fire station and it and its cost. So I actually called Chief McKee at La Pointe and had a great conversation and verified some things. And then I had a good conversation with Larry Ellerson and Gray Turner at Utah Transit Authority. I'm a normal, ordinary person who these guys are accessible to. And I haven't made my mind up yet on the BRT, but I just urge you, and you can. And if you need to contact them, they are so willing to talk to you. Before you post it on Facebook, verify it.
That is good advice. Thank you.
Police Fire Department, built in 2009, not brand-new.
Thank you very much.
On your point. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Okay, anyone else?
I hate to be a pain in the rear, but.
Oh, it's okay.
My name is Donna W. Jolly again, and I live at 1380 East, 150 North, the worst road in Pittsburgh. Last week, no, shake your head, Diana.
I, there are some so, so bad roads.
Well, last week when I made a presentation, they, I wondered if I misunderstood, and I wanted to clarify a couple of things. One thing, I thought that Scott Harrington said that you had $4 million and you were going to start fixing the roads. What did you say? You said $4 million?
Yeah, $4 million is what we estimate we need each year in order for us to eventually solve our road problem. So that's $4 million year after year for 20 years.
Okay. Now, I'm going to say something else. I used to take some scouts to announce the meeting year, at least 30 years ago, because it's beyond Giles, I'll have to admit. He's embarrassed to admit too that he was one of my scouts. But I don't know if he intended that one. Mayor Haney, their plan was to fix two roads a year. And I thought that was a good plan, and I, of course, I didn't know anything about it, and the roads weren't any. But I noticed that plan has gone down the drain. And when they put the water system in, I don't think anything was done for years, and it would need a lot to catch up. But I want to know how you're, where you're going to get the form.
Great question. So we have.
But I thought you said it was in the priority, and it was in the plan.
Well, the idea is we know how much it costs. The funding of it is really to execute everything that we like to do. So if with current Class C road monies, contributions from the general fund, this tax increase that the state legislature has allowed counties to vote on, if everything were to happen, we would have $1.7 million available there for roads, which means we're still $2.3 million short.
Well, when you say $4 million, because I imagine one road would cost less than another road. Scott, if you just spent $1 million a year, that'd take you 20 years. But even then, I think people would be happy if they saw you at least doing one road a year.
Yeah, I mean, we've done road projects in the past, and maybe you haven't seen them, but because we don't have a ton.
Not my area.
But I mean, I've asked our public works. They are putting the cost estimate together to fix your road and the costs, and we'll get those things in front of the city.
Well, why I was saying all this, because just the month before I was in here giving my petition for my road to be patched, you said there was only a certain amount of money, and it was under $700,000 or around $700,000 that you had, and you had no money planned for doing anything other than tanning the good roads. That's what you said.
Yeah, so we have a bond that we're still paying off that expires in 2018. And until that road bond is paid off, we don't have the $1.7 million. We do only have just a few hundred thousand each year.
We have a road bond?
We do. We did a bunch of roads in two buildings. We did a bunch of road improvements and took out a bond, and we're still paying.
Before the water system? Did water system start?
Water system, I think it was over the course of four or five years.
So that was before the water?
2007, '08. I think the water system was finished in 2009.
Well, I was really curious about it because I, I'm a very conservative person, and I don't like to see, my grandkids tease me because I make them put the plastic spoons in the bowl so they can put them in the dishwasher. But I also use 40-year-old wheat from my breath, and it still works. But that's, and I was going to bring you some tonight, but I had 10 great-grand kids today, so. Anyway, that doesn't have anything to do with this. But I, I really am concerned, because I'm a conservative person, I'm really concerned about some of the things you spend money on. Because I think if you, if you think that, or you say that roads are a priority, then I should make it a priority. You should decide that it is a priority before other things. If people come in and ask for $6,000 to tell their, that they want to conserve water, you can say, well, we have a priority to our citizens. Priority to our citizens is to fix a road. So we have to put so much money in our budget so we don't have money to spend on superfluous things. And this might be a superfluous thing because the top priority, or one of the top priorities, is the roads. I think if you want to tighten your belts, you need to cut, not put more money into other programs. And it seems to me, but on the budget, it's cutting the road budget and putting the money into other things. I, I think it takes courage because everybody likes nice things. We want that public safety building. We want a building in our community. But it takes courage to say, I'm sorry, we have a priority to our citizens, and the priority is to fix the roads first, or start fixing the roads first. And once we start, then maybe we can do other things. The tax money that comes into the city, I think, should be treated as a widow's mite. I am a widow. I have to pay taxes. My taxes are over $1,500 a year. I think that's a lot for me. over $1,500 a year. I think that's a lot for me. I think sometimes you think, when people are paying their taxes, it should be treated as the widow's mite. It should be treated respectfully and carefully. I don't want my taxes raised. And I think you've been told twice, the people in the community do not want their taxes raised. So we've got to do it by tightening our belts, I would think, and thinking of ways to save money instead of spend money. Now, I have been, last few months, I've been to Arizona and Boise on roads. And every time I turn around, there's somebody fixing a road. Well, it has to be a constant priority. Roads are, have to be constantly worked on. For them, and this, in the summer, of course, is the time they need to do it. We had a family the other day, and my sons say, boy, I sure hate to come and ride on these roads. Would be glad to sign a petition, but they're not residents. I bet if you had people coming into the Strawberry Day celebration and other places, they would moan and groan about coming in on these roads. Because citizens are coming back to Pleasant Grove for some of these special things. And they don't want to drive on those kind of roads. I hope that we will wake up to the responsibilities that we have. I don't want to be contentious because I really admire and respect everybody and, and the other people that work for the city. I, I just think that, I wish you'd just be a little bit more thoughtful in your spending and get priority in there for the roads. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else for the public open session? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the open session. And we'll move on to the consent agenda items. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a motion.
Make the motion to re-approve the consent agenda items. How's second?
Motion by Sid, second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item of business is board commission and committee appointments, which we don't have any of. So we're going to move on to the presentations. And the first one to be by Scott Darrington for the LEAD Academy graduates.
Thank you, Mayor Council. We started a LEAD Academy last year to work with our employees, particularly those that are in a supervisor level position, to help train, educate, but also to have them teach us, well, everybody really, as to, ways to exude leadership and training amongst the employees and the staff of Pleasant Grove City. So what this entails is there's a group of 12 of us, myself, I'm sorry.
Yeah, one sec.
Yep.
How many people are there?
Oh, sorry. You guys need, there's, they're good.
Yeah, she's watching your child.
Yeah. There's chairs up there if anybody wants to sit.
I'll be quick and then we'll get to you guys. Part of the academy is we get a group of 12 employees and we meet once a week for about two months. And part of that is we have everybody read a book called Endurance about a failed mission to Antarctica in the early 1900s.
Successful.
Successful in some ways.
They lived.
And they lived. Spoiler alert. So.
You can't say failed. Failed is dead.
Okay.
Well, I don't want to read that.
Yeah. It's, they have extraordinary circumstances. And the person that was the leader, the captain of the ship, was amazing with the tactics and things that he used to kind of keep everybody alive and keep the crew going. So we read that book, and then we talked about the leadership poles that are part of it. And then we divided up amongst the participants, trains the rest of us on a particular leadership principle. And so we do two of those a week. And again, we do this over the two months. And it's kind of, it's a wonderful experience for us to all learn and continue to learn about management tools and practices, so leadership traits and things that we can do to, again, enhance the employees here in Pleasant Grove to make them better at those things. But also to have, you know, buy-in from all the staff and things, as we're trying to become better at the delivery of services. So I have a list of those that participated that I'd like to present a certificate to. And then I have one individual that participated in the course. I'd like for him to take just a few minutes and kind of share his experience with the city council. So we have Tyler Wilkins, who is with our recreation department. Randy Johnson with our parks department. Ken Young with community development. We also have Roy Stavies, who's not here today. He's with our community development department. So, that's Ken. Greg Woodcox with our public works department. We have an elected official join us this go-around. We had Diana Anderson on our city council. Britt Smith, who's in our police department, I don't. Drew Inghamman with the fire department. There's a couple that told me that they couldn't make it, and I couldn't remember who. So I think Drew's one of those. And then Andrea Thurlow with our library, she couldn't make it as well, so. I'm going to ask Randy Johnson from our parks to take a couple of minutes and share his experience.
Part of it is public speaking, you know.
So, I guess, I received a call about five from Scott. If I could say some words. And honestly, were you down to shop office when I heard it?
Yeah.
Because, per everything I have, so I'm gonna, I'm just gonna go over what I have here. But, you know, yeah, my name is Randy, and I work at the Parks Department, a great, great department. And I was asked on the second group to take this leadership academy class. And yes, we did, we did read this book, The Endurance. And Sir Ernest Shackleton led this expedition. He wanted to cross the land down the, Antarctic, and get from one side, the other would be the first to do that. And so, this fine young man, Scott Darrington, I have, I have some years on him. So, he, he had us read this book. And it seemed like we had possibly almost two weeks off to read it. And then we, we got back and aboard here, we, we discussed things that we, we learned, good things of the leadership of Ernest Shackleton or some of the other leaders that stepped up, things that possibly they did, they did wrong where their, some of their food spoiled, or what they had to do during, just to get the meat, or when their ship did get frozen in the ice and such. So, so a very great, great book. And so we listed everything, we highlighted, made a list. I bet we had 30 different things that we, we pulled out of the book that we found that was very interesting, from leadership, training, skills, things that didn't go good. And then we were asked, as Scott said, we, we all picked up, picked some things and/or were assigned. Some of the things I listed, well, that were, one was on hiring, other, focus, goals, persistence, unity, team building, stay out of drama, taking responsibility, delegating, hope, optimism, courage, knowledge, and training, and humility and self-confidence. And so we would each take an hour and get up and present, present this to a week. And can say, I look forward to each Wednesday getting together and, and hearing these things from a manager from each department that was here in the city, to have, to hear their perspective on situations they did. Something, one thing I remember sticking out, I wrote down was, I remember Officer Smith, Britt, mentioned about debriefing when they'd get back from things. And that seemed to be, I remember Diana was quite impressed by that. And I thought about that. And I thought, you know, that's something that our Arnold department could, the simple way we're doing a project, or we might be one day into three-day project where we could get back and say, hey, what, what did we learn from this? What, what can we do better tomorrow? Make this better, quicker, more efficient next time. So everybody brought something to the table. I was asked to talk on unity and team building. I shared experiences from a previous company I worked for, and everything was about team and building. Drew, he talked about his father. He, he seemed like he had persistence. His father worked so hard in a, in a group, a band he was in. And he held up the gold record that his father, one of the many, it seemed like he had four or five, but he took the siblings that inherited the gold record. His father was one of the original lettermen. And I sat straight up thinking, wow, how, for him to pass it around, to see that, that was neat. So, what a, what a great thing. I'd like to encourage that this continues. It was, it was good for me. And unfortunately, you know, I missed the last class due to visiting family out of state. And, you know, I hope I can go next, the next last class of that group and re-watch a video at the end of the documentary. So, well worth, well worth the time, well worth, very educational. So, thank you.
Can I just clarify one thing, Randy? So we don't give them two weeks off, three weeks off. We knew you. You know darn well you're giving them. Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask the city council, the tag team here, and help us introduce these clubs and bands and groups and sports teams to do their best.
Okay. Eric, I want to preface it with this. This is a little sound bite from a car full of 11-year-old boys heading down to the baseball team coming back from a state ship. This is going on a little flight. We're like a good 20-minute trip, the bus ride and them coming back. And it was so much fun. So, hanging out in the center of the. God, on their roof of the car. I mean, that's just so comfortable with that. Whether it's sports or choir, whoever it is, PJ Vikings are off. So, now you can hang over.
So we have a lot of Vikings in the room, a lot of coaches, assistant coaches, staff, faculty, we name it. We have here, we, we blew, I see a lot blew there. So, I've asked a student, unless we have an administrator here, a student, Lucy Hong, to kind of get up and read a, ask her to kind of Reader's Digest really quick, and kind of just kind of talk about the accomplishments our great high school has accomplished this year, which is a long list. And then, then I was going to have, so I think we have more volleyball team here, and Coach Jones here, if we could have her kind of just talk for a little bit. And then we're going to save the baseball for the last. Is that all right, guys? So, okay.
This is weird.
You are representing DECA.
I am representing DECA and choir and all the nerds. But that's okay. That's good. I'll just, you know, own a business or something. Okay, so I just have this list here from the newspaper that they wrote. And so I'll skip the ones, baseball and volleyball, because they're here so they can talk about themselves. But we had some state qualifiers from girls' golf and wrestling, as I'm sure we all know, were state champs. And track had seven state qualifiers and two state placers, region, and fifth at state. And then, clubs, we had a lot of good success with our clubs. We had SCCLA had three national qualifiers, one state officer, and FPLA had three national qualifiers. We had 16 state science replacers with two national qualifiers. And we had a second place Alpine School District math team scramble. And first place Alpine District Math D2B team from our mathletes. Chemistry had three students chosen by the American Chemical Society for prestigious award. FFA had their food dance team placed second in state and some other qualifiers. And the performing arts did really well. We had lots of good success at Shakespeare competition, dropped first place sweepstakes. And so that's kind of like overall the first place. And they got second place in region and second place at state. Choir had a lot of success, the chamber choir. We ended up taking, we did a lot of just random competitions, like Christmas music competitions, and we had a lot of success there. And that was kind of an adventure. And four of our five groups went to state, well, all five of them went to state, but four of them got straight superiors, which basically means were pretty much the best in state. So that's really good. And orchestra did really well, getting straight superiors. Band got excellence and, and all that stuff. So with DECA, I'll go more into that, because that's kind of who I am. But, so this year, we had a record-breaking year where we took 12 people to nationals. And we had a state officer last year, and we have a state officer this upcoming year. So that, we've had pretty much a state officer pretty much like the past five years. So we're doing really well. And this year, we were, because we had two scholarship recipients. And the state of Utah had a scholarship, a national scholarship recipient from DECA for years. So we had two in one year. So it was a great honor to our school. So, thank you.
That's great.
Homegrown coach, by the way.
Yes.
Homegrown coach, by the way.
Yeah, PG Power, right?
Class of, I'm sure.
Class of 2006.
Yeah. So I'm Elise Jones. This is Jenny Biggs. She was a setter for us this year. This is Alexis Sharps. She's a senior. She's going to college next year, and she's a middle blocker. This is Brielle Fowler. She's a sophomore. She was a defensive.
This is Brooklyn Bally. She was the libero for us this year, and she's going to play at U this coming fall. And this is Wendy Anderson. She was an outside hitter for us. And obviously, we took state this year. We also took region. And we're back-to-back region champs and three-time, three-time state champions from 2012 to now. And yeah, we did an awesome job this year, but it's all because they worked their tails off and just loving to death. And I'm going to let Jenny Biggs say just a few words about it.
Well, we really couldn't have done it without Coach. But it's true. I think so, but it is. She pushes us so hard in practice and she expects the best from us. And she not only makes us better volleyball players, but better people. And she's not just in it for the trophies and the first place stuff. She really cares about us. And she, you know, wants to influence in our lives. And we couldn't do it without her. So.
Thank you so much for letting us come. And it's an honor for us to be here. And obviously Vikings, we're just working to achieve higher. And you've seen our baseball program, wrestling program, and even our basketball programs that are just getting better and better. So it's been a good year. So proud to be a Viking.
Wrestling? I don't, I don't see that.
You want to bring up your whole coaching player?
Okay. I guess we'll just come back here to the microphone.
We want to put them on the spot, too.
Okay, great.
Homegrown coach, by the way.
Yes. Not only that, when I was 16 years old, I worked for the city with Greg. So I got a lot of great stories that we could talk about right now. So, he's probably got some good stories about me, too. So it's all good. So, a lot of days. I'm the, I'm the head coach of Pleasant Grove Baseball. And it's a thrill. It's a thrill to live in this town and to be able to have great boys like Easton that's here and, and to be able to work with them. One of the things I want to talk about, too, is we, we went to Diana Anderson this year with a vision that we had. And you guys were a big part of our success. We wanted to have an indoor facility to hit base- We wanted to have an indoor facility to hit base, to get better all winter. And that was provided for us. And it was an unbelievable advantage that we had over the other teams. And because the city jumped on our back, you know, we were able to, be able to accomplish some things. We took second last year and we took region last year. And this year, we took region and we took state. Currently, we're ranked number seven in the nation. So that was awesome. That was a thrill to see the USA Today and you pull up in the paper and there's Pleasant Grove, Utah, right there. So we had relatives from California calling all over the place. People were thrilled to see Pleasant Grove in the USA Today paper. So that was really fun. Easton, first of all, I need to introduce my coaches. Assistant Coach right here, Kim Walker. Okay, Kim. Assistant Coach Erin Wells. Assistant Coach Randy Hicken. And Coach John Bottar. We have someone way more special than all of us here and we'll be able to talk about her in a second. That's Sarah Hicken. So save your applause for that, all right? So anyways, what are some of the things I want to talk about? We have a crazy regiment at Pleasant Grove High School and Easton can talk about that. If you ever show Pleasant Grove High School at 5:00 in the morning, people are there. And it's someone working out, doing something, lifting weights, running, doing something, whatever. We even have, the wrestling team started a tradition to have overnight workouts. So they go from 6:00 at night till 6:00 in the morning or the next till whenever they want to do it. We do that as well. We have overnight workout at the first of the year to find out how tough we are and how dedicated we are and to be able to become teammates together. We also have things that we do. We hike the G every Friday during the first of school year. And we hike that not only to represent our school, but to look at our community and to look down and say, this is why we play this sport. And because, because we have people in this community that have backed us and done so many good things for so long. When we went to Kearns High School this year, Kearns is where the semifinal, the quarterfinals were. Once again, our community packs the stands every time we go anywhere. And they were talking, what happens if we get rained out? What happens if we get rained out at UVU? So they were saying, okay, if we get rained out at UVU, we're going to have the state tournament at Kearns. Well, Kearns is a wonderful facility, but they said there's no way. The director came back and said, why couldn't we have it at Kearns? They said Pleasant Grove. They said, what do you mean? They said, we cannot hold the Pleasant Grove people that follow them. So that was a thrill that everyone knows that when we play this huge. So when we got over to UVU, there's a complete sellout. And we had more support than any other team. It's embarrassing almost for the other team to be able to try to cheer against Pleasant Grove, the community and the students. But it was awesome. So it's a thrill for us to ride the wave of Pleasant Grove supporting us. The same way with wrestling, same with volleyball. We have fun supporting our athletes and so it's great. So we want to thank the community for supporting us so much. One of the things that I did when I got off the bus is, of course, we had, we're right all the way up the street and we had people clapping left and right and coming out of their house, clapping to us and just, you know, put us almost in tears, at least me anyways. The boys, I don't know. We'll have to ask Easton about that. But we had all these little boy and they were just rock stars. And one thing I wanted to do, I asked Sid to sign my hat because that meant something to me. She didn't want to sign my hat, but I wanted her to sign my hat because I wanted to feel, that reminded me of how much our community supports us. And so when I look at that hat every time I see Sid's autograph on there, it makes me happy because she was, because you guys are my rock stars. And so that was awesome for me. But what I want to do before, before we end is I want to bring Easton up. Easton Walker, by the way, his, his last two years, he was 17 and one as a pitcher. He was the 5A, 5A Player of the Year last year and made first team All-State. He is going to go attend Brigham Young University, the second baseman pitcher and wherever they want him. And I'm going to bring up Easton to talk a little about Sarah Hicken and some of the other things that we had going on this year. Randy, did I introduce you? Okay, he was hiding over there. I just wanted to make sure of that. Okay, Easton, come on.
Well, I'm Walker, like you said. I've been a four-year starter as a freshman. One of the things that we did this year is we dedicated our season to Sarah Hicken with cancer. And one of the things we all have, the onritho jerseys, it says right here on my sleeve, Sarah Hicken Strong. It's been one of the things our school and our community's come up with, fighting cancer and and grime through problems in life, not only just with baseball, but with life itself. You know, being able to go out there again this year and take another run in state and take care of it this year. It was awesome for us to be able to give that trophy to Sarah and see the look on her face when we told her this is, this season was dedicated to her and actually be able to come through and do that for her. It was really special. When I first came into this program, you know, we started from the bottom and had lots of struggles with the team and uniting with each other and each, each year got better and better. And Coach Henry really did a fantastic job with keeping the guys together and being a supporter, not only as a as a person in each one of our lives. And so I'd like to thank him for, for all the help and the dedication that he puts in on the team. And not only did we all do that workout overnight and that stuff, but he did it too. And he was right there with us. And to be able to play in front of all is one of the greatest things, greatest feelings in the world. And it doesn't get any better than that. And so I'm proud to be a part of Pleasant Grove and to be able to grow up here. I never want to leave here, so thank you.
Randy, Randy, would you and Sarah like to come up real quick? Come on up. This is, this is our champion right here, Sarah Hicken. She deserves the biggest round of applause out of everybody.
You know what? This is, this was a great year. I mean, I've coached Pleasant Grove Baseball for, I don't even know. Started with Coach Hall before Coach Henry was there. I like that, by the way. It's okay. But anyways, you know what? It, you know, I'm from a small town. I actually moved here from, from Canada and moved here. It's, this is a great place. I mean, this reminds me of my little hometown where sports is everything and, and the community is, I mean, it's kind of like Hoosiers. When you, when there's a ball game, everybody leaves town. You know, there's only a couple thousand people and, you know, they clear out and go to the game. And, you know, it really reminds me of the, the community support that Pleasant Grove has. I can't believe it. We've seen it with Sarah. You know, the support that we've got through the community has been unbelievable. We, we couldn't be more allowed to be Pleasant Grove Vikings and live in this community. It's, it's really been phenomenal. Our roads in, our roads in, in my little town were horrible too. But you know what? We had great sports teams and a great community and we had a lot of love for each other. So, and you know what? We're seeing that here firsthand and we surely appreciate it. And we thank you for everything that the community has done for our family and, and everything, so.
Sarah's accomplishments too, about what she's got going on.
Oh yeah, Sarah's such a softball player. She's actually got a scholarship to go play in Colorado to play softball. So we're excited about that. We're, we're in shape hopefully in the next little bit. She's about, she's about halfway through her treatments. Just to give you a little bit of information, we haven't got the pathology report back. On Thursday, she got taken out of her back, which, which she couldn't hurt or something, but. But anyways, she, she, she's halfway through her treatments. And she did have some scans and stuff on Wednesday. And her tumor, her major tumor, like on her chest and heart area, is down 72%. So that's really, really good. There wasn't any cancer in the, in the major tumor that kind of started causing her problems and
Intermediary stem.
Intermediary stem, I don't know what the terminology is. But anyways, we do know that it's all positive. They're cutting back her treatments a little bit so that hopefully she, you know, she doesn't have aggressive treatment and cause her more harm in the future. So we're really excited about that because we want her to stay healthy. And, and you know, through all of this, it's amazing because obviously, everybody has their own little personal tragedies about how, you know, some, I'm sure everybody here in this room has been touched by something to health problem or something in their family. And, and, you know, the, the one thing I can speak to for sure is the, the positive attitude that Sarah has had. She's had that on her own from, from the day that we found out. She, she wasn't upset. She, she's done really hard staying positive. I think a lot of that has to do with her friends. Coach Henry actually started the Sarah Hicken Strong and he just has a lot of love for Sarah. And we really appreciate that too because it's, it's meant a lot to our family. But the community, the support, her friends have kept her positive. As you can see, she's, she's, you know, halfway through a heck of a battle and she's, she's, tries to go out and do everything she can to, to, you know, support the community. And, and anyways, we're, we're, we couldn't be more happy about the situation that we're in. Let's put it that way. It's, some, some people think it's a devastating situation and it's just made our, our family and our community stronger, in my opinion. And, you know, her, her doctors at primary children too, they, you know, it started with them. They're phenomenal as far as just knowing what to do and how to approach this whole thing. So again, I just really want to thank the community and the, that has supported our family and supported Sarah. It, it's, it's been a, it's been interesting and, and again, couldn't be more proud to be a Pleasant Grove citizen. So thank you.
Mayor and I, I think we all have a chance, but I just wanted to say one thing. I'm going to get emotional, so sorry. Because I've seen some amazing things in our community at the high school, unity. I see tremendous unity in our community through the high school and West English and through all our programs. And I saw an amazing thing that night, Coach. When you guys got off the bus. I saw your team get off the bus, gather up, gather that young in the middle of them, presented with the trophy and cheered her on. And I think that spoke volumes about the character of our program at Pleasant Grove. What true blue really means, what the spirit of being a Viking truly means. And I felt honored to be part of that, Coach. To see that happen, to see that in our community, what it means to be. So I just wanted to thank you for the hard work, the dedication, Easton, that you guys go through is tremendous. And all our programs, what they go through. And so I just say, congratulations and thank you. I don't see that.
Hey, no, I mean, you summed it up. I'm just class 97, proud to be a Viking. I, I will be there whenever I'm on City Council to support Vikings and King. We have a good thing in our community. So, and thanks to the coaches, to lead the kids and the teachers. And no matter what the subject is, we just hope. This is, this is the best part of the festival is I can tell that whether or not I'm on City Council, I'll be supporting Vikings. So just thank you. And when Coach Henry asked me to sign it, I was embarrassed. I have another thing.
She was in Sandlot.
It's famous.
You did, yeah.
I have another thing because I appreciate it.
Yeah, the, the blue that I bleed is from BYU, but my kids will all be Vikings. And I love that you represent our city. You are everything that's great about Pleasant Grove, champions, warriors, compassionate for each other. You're everything that this city is great about. You're the very best of us, we represent this world everywhere you go. Thank you.
Sarah, every picture of you that I've seen online, you're always smiling. I mean, I don't like personally, but I've seen your story on my phone online and you're always smiling and happy and bound and courageous with what you're going through. For being that in our community, not only to be youth, but for adults as well. So thank you.
Well, let's give you guys another round of applause.
Now that the fun's over, we'll move on to 10A is going to be a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed Pleasant Grove City fiscal year 2015-16 budget. The final budget includes the fee schedule and the Pleasant Grove redevelopment agency budget. Okay, I think we have a short presentation. If you can get it up here, give us just a second. I don't remember. I don't think so, though. I should have thought, I should have thought that through.
Great, homegrown, homegrown.
86.
Enough said.
I should have been. Probably more that, that way. Here we go.
All right, okay, let's find out. I'm 73, what year? What year did you graduate? All right. Who can beat 63?
All right, so really, the main point of this part is to get public input on the budget. There's really nothing new here that we haven't seen before. I did put together about seven or eight slides to just give some background information. I think most of the people here, I think they've seen this before. But I thought it'd be good to put just a little bit of information on revenues. Obviously, when we're just looking at general fund, our biggest two revenues are sales tax and property tax. So I thought I'd put a little graphic to show where that's been over time. You can see back in 2008 or, yeah, 2009, 2010 was kind of when we were during difficult economic times, sales tax revenues actually decreased during those two years. But they've been improving since then. And in 2011, 2012, they were fairly rapidly. It kind of slowed down 12 and 13. This last year has been a pretty good year related to sales tax. You know, having the Walmart open up, that's a good thing, but it's just good. People, y'all may or may, may or may not know this, but sales tax revenues in this attributed on a formula. So the money that is based on where the sale occurred. So if a dollar spent in Pleasant Grove City, 50 cents of that dollar right in Pleasant Grove and the other half is based, is distributed statewide based on population. So our, where our sales tax base is really probably huge. A lot of our sales tax revenue is really driven by the statewide, statewide economy. So, but it's been a good, good year. The forecast that I've got in there for 2015 is, is kind of the same trend. I wouldn't anticipate it to be as high as this last year. We're not, depending on what goes on, but you try to be a little conservative in, in projections. This is on property tax, going back to 2010. Property tax typically is, is fairly stable. You know, it's just really based on the growth that occurs in the city. A lot of people think as property appreciates in value, there's kind of a, an increase in revenue and property tax. But it's not really the way it works based on the, on the state formula. You can see a little bit of a spike there in 2013. And that, you know, if you look, if you did a trend line from 2010 to 2016, it's almost a straight line except for that one year. And, and really what that's related to, for, for two or three years, like '09, '10 and '11, during the economic downturn, there was a lot of relatively, relatively high amount of property taxes that didn't get paid for a year or two. And, and when it gets paid later on, that's kind of why that spike occurred in 2013. Just a pie chart, and this is just general fund revenues. And this is in our budget and just kind of show where it comes from. So 25% of it comes from property taxes. Thirty percent comes from sales taxes, which sometimes is surprising because you say, well, Pleasant Grove, we don't necessarily have a huge, uh, sales tax base, but still it's our larger source. The other taxes there, twenty-one percent, um, those are taxes you pay. There's taxes on your utility bill, franchise fees, things like that. And I didn't notice this till I already sent these slides to Ken. That licenses and permits really relates to the green slice right up there. So business licenses, things like that. That's probably the one area that grows and, uh, shot just based on building. We have building booms, that, that number's a lot larger than when it's not. Intergovernmental revenue is grants, so we don't get a lot related to grants, um, state and federal grants. And this does not include the Class C many, I should probably point that out, or that, that amount would be larger. Uh, charges for services, things like ambulance fees, plan check fees, separate portion, other revenues, just miscellaneous one-time things that come in from time to time. Um, general expenditures, so that same dollar amount, the twelve million one eighty, this is how it's spent. Uh, and again, this isn't the whole city budget, this is just the general fund, things through taxes. Um, the largest portion is public safety and that's always, that's, that's always the case, forty-four percent. The next largest is parks and recreation at eighteen percent. General government there, thirteen percent, it's things like, um, not only the, the management staff and things like that, but it's also things like utility bills, cleaning the bill, um, our insurance, which is a large portion of that. Um, public works, that red there, that's the streets department, so that's not our pavement preservation and regular road maintenance type of plan, that's just the streets department. They, a lot of that's filling potholes and, and things like that. Um, court is a, is a, is a small portion there, sorry, I could see, three percent. That other eleven percent I've got on the next page here, just to show what that's made up of, five thousand is for capital equipment. So, a lot of that is vehicles, we have police vehicles, fire vehicles. But, but it also includes things like, uh, our copy, copy machines, computers, fitness equipment, things like that. Dispatch, they're eighty-three thousand dollars, that's the amount of general fund budget that goes towards the dispatch. So, if you look at our dispatch, portion of it's funded through a, uh, tax that's on your, I believe it's on your, every phone line pays like a one dollar a month tax. We, and that's a state tax, but we get a portion of that to help fund our, our dispatch. The three hundred and eighty-three is the amount that comes from our general fund to, to supplement that, so to do the whole, the whole dispatch. We also transfer a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars out of our general fund just to go into the streets, the Class C streets budget. And if you don't know what, I use that term sometimes and people may or may not know when I say a Class C, that's just type of a road in the state of Utah, basically a paved city street. And so we get a certain amount of money from the gas tax, but obviously it's not enough. And we are putting a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars from our general fund into, into that budget. And I probably should point out, our total Class C expended for the year in the upcoming budget, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. So that's in addition to the amount that's being paid for the, for the debt. Uh, the last three there, the recreation center, swimming pool, arts and culture, same thing. Those are the money that is from the general fund to fund those programs. We have a recreation center, which brings in over a million dollars in revenue, but that's the amount that comes from the general fund to support the, not only recreation center, but recreation programs. The swimming pool and the, uh, arts and cultures are, yeah, our arts program, PG players, Pleasant Grove orchestra, things like that. I just put together a quick table on capital projects, um, general projects. The money that comes to fund those typically is going to be our general fund surplus, so. Um, this five hundred and twenty-two thousand, most of that is coming from, uh, spent money in the previous fiscal year. So the year that ended June thirtieth, twenty fourteen, that five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. The other items are related to our enterprise funds, those capital projects. And the, the first three, culinary water, secondary sewer water, those are coming from just our regular ongoing revenues. Storm rain, a portion of that is from ongoing revenues, but the largest portion of it is, I think about one point three million of that is from, you know, we had, we, uh, issued bonds in two thousand and thirteen, some of that money is still unspent and that, that's budgeted to be, uh, completed this year. Um, and I didn't put something that says utility rates on this, and I meant to, but this is our u- uh, utility rates for next year. We talked about this a couple of times. Basically, our, our four main utilities, culinary water, secondary water, storm rain and sewer. Three of those rates are going up a little, one's going down a little, the overall proposed increase. Uh, again, this is based on eight thousand gallons a month water usage and a quarter acre lot would be two dollars and forty-nine cents a month for those for, but remember the drought surcharge that was on there last year at a dollar twenty-five will only be sixty-two cents this year. So that would be an average increase, well, an average increase based, uh, situations of a dollar eighty-seven a month. So, that's every single page in this budget, but it's, I think, the biggest things. And I'm happy to answer any questions, or we can just turn, turn it over for public comment.
Stay close to the microphone, cause we're gonna open it up.
Okay, I'll maybe just speak from that microphone over there, okay?
Anybody want to start before we open it up to the public? No? Okay. We're gonna open it right up to the public for questions and input on the, uh, general fund and the RDA fund for two thousand and fifteen sixteen. That includes terminology of, if we all don't know what the terminology is or how these funds work, we can, we have a professor that can answer those questions as well.
As we start at Blaine Thatcher, one twenty north, Fortinard East, I would just like to get the council's impression uh, of the budget. I'm assuming they've all been in detail. And, uh, before we get into a huge discussion, but I'd like to hear the council and you, Mayor, your take on the proposed budget.
Okay. Who wants to begin?
Work our way this way.
So, it's just an open question?
Just, yeah, I mean, we've heard from Dean and I'd like to hear the council who represent us, I'd like to hear your take and Mayor as well.
Sure. We, you know, as you look at the numbers, um, one number that stands out to me, I, I think probably stands out to a lot of people is our sales tax. Um, people probably be quite surprised that it's, it's so high, um, which is good. And we have more development coming and which will increase it, will help us offset some of the costs that we have before us. Now, one thing we ask Dean to do is always to have a, a balanced budget, and I think that's what he brings before us. Here about cutting, cutting corners, I think I had heard Mrs. John talking about cutting a bit. You know, as you look through here, it's, it's tough to look, look at what corners we can cut, because I think the city already is running pretty lean on what we have coming in and what we have to spend. And so there, there's some issues there, um, but overall, I'm happy with our general fund. What we have.
Um, so, Blaine, I'm not a, an accountant, I'm not gonna surprise you.
That's probably a good thing.
Yes. That you're surprised or not?
No, that you're not, you know, I'm still trying to live it down, so.
Um, so, uh, I rely a lot on Dean's expertise. I know that he's actually award-winning. I know that, um, he, uh, if, and I love that when I have a question about it, Dean explains it to me in my level of understanding. Uh, I would love for there not to be a two dollar and fifty cent increase. I'm actually very surprised. I think it's a two percent, two point.
Two, four point two percent.
Oh, two percent even, right there. Dean has it right there for me, um, which I think is actually less than the standard, um, the actual cost of living increase nationally for most materials. I think, you know, most materials have gone to, uh, three percent. Anybody in the construction, Bill, Bill West, do you know what the, uh, cost of living increase is for materials? Or just the cost of increase of materials?
Are you talking about materials, or you just talking about cost of living?
Just materials.
I don't know.
Okay.
Cost of living is under two percent.
It's pretty much level right now. Cost of steel's down, but wood's up a little bit. So overall, for our starting project, everything's been leveled for the past three years.
Um,
Could, can I ask another question? So while you guys are going through, then I get some input on that too. Um, I, I'm wondering, your role is on this. We saw the budgets that, uh, that sit together, proposed to you. Um, does somebody go through and, uh, and look and say, well, we really are looking for four million, four million dollars a year? What can we do? Uh, Dean mentioned that insurance is a heavy hitter to us. So what, as you're saying, what you're saying, what is your role or opportunity to look in there and make recommendations back to the city workers on how to up some of these funds for these additional, uh, I think it was responded as needed, priority, priority project? I'd like to hear that from you guys, even if it has to go back to Eric again on that. Sorry that I should have spoke up first.
I, I think it's, it's paramount in our, in our role, because we represent you. And I think it's also the citizens, also to come in and ask Dean, and that's one of the things I've been most impressed with, with Dean. This is, this door is always open for us to come in and express if we have a concern. Uh, let's say, well, when you talk about insurance, that we, about those issues and see it, are we, are we doing the best, finding the best options that we can? And those questions are asked of you, and I ask those, and so, and he gives us the answers that he has. I, I think he does a tremendous job like that.
Um, so our, our role is, I can't say that our. Um, the responsibility that I put on myself is to go, um, chapter by chapter, page by page of the document. The document is probably eighty-three, eighty-four, or something like that pages. And, uh, and then just when I have a question, I just enumerate it or make side notes and then I go find out, um, in discussions with each department. Um, I am, um, I'm amazed at what they do with the amount of money that they have. Cutting, uh, seems, uh, very difficult for them to run their department. Um, the things that we spend money on have either been on or have been, um, desired as a community. And so, uh, there are lots of needs and there isn't a lot of money, so.
So it's not an ideal, perfect budget where we live it, and I've got a budget here that I can support, but I have raised concerns. Just to provide one example, this drought surcharge involves the renting of half the amount of water we rented last year. But we did have our water, engineer expert tells us we didn't need to rent any, and that was the position that I advocated, was that we not rent water. Uh, there are always areas where we have to compromise or where the majority will prevail, when a minority voice on the council, at least, has a view on how we should prioritize things. He's asked about a general impression, you know, when we look at the pie chart of where our money's divided up, the, uh, the fact that public works gets a five percent, when that's an essential function of government is a concern. We'd like to see, especially when we hear regularly, daily from residents about the condition of our roads and the need to focus like infrastructure and deteriorating critical needs of our city. So there's certainly things that I would like to see happen in our city and we need to, uh, we need to continue to take a holistic approach and a willingness to make the hard decisions and to evaluate priorities and to see if our numbers actually show what we say a priority is. If we tell you that something's a priority, but the numbers just otherwise, that's a concern for me. But again, this is a budget that I can support. There are, there are, as Diana said, there are miracles that our staff can work within the budgets that they have. They do incredible things with limited resources and we do have difficult decisions to make every day up here. And so, um, generally speaking, I can support the budget, but I have voiced those concerns, they're on the record. Um, and, uh, and I want us to immediately proactively approach, rather than just review the, the budget that Dean's to us. We need to be affirmative counsel, in my view, coming to our staff and saying, hey, you know, when I first took office, I advocated the introduction of a zero-based budget approach to our city finances, because I want to actively, proactively assess, are there different solutions to healthcare costs that we haven't discussed? That we haven't even looked to, and put that on the agenda and talk about, are there different approaches to some of the prioritizations that will get us to where we really want to be or where our residents really want us to be? So there are things that I think we still need to work at. This is a work in progress, but I believe that we, uh, we do need to support the budget that we have here. I'm not pleased about any increases in rates, some of them in particular, you know, are predicated on the purchase of a pipe plant or other things that, that I didn't necessarily advocate in the first instance, but, but in the context of what we're trying to accomplish, I will not be like the federal government and operate without a budget. I think we need to approve it. I think it's worthy of approval tonight, or well, it won't be approved tonight, but it's worthy of approval when it's discussed, but it's been perfect and our issues that I have raised, and like I said, they're on the right.
Just one clarification there, so Dean, the five percent that goes to public works, that's just from the general fund, that's not the BNC?
That's correct.
Right? The enterprise funds.
Right, so that, and the BNC isn't an enterprise fund, but that's where we, that's where it's road projects, road maintenance projects are funded out of there.
This is actually personnel.
It's mostly personnel and the streets department that
Yes.
That's a personnel and street class and, um, po- filling potholes, things like that, so.
So you do, I haven't heard so far, and I don't know what open forum means, so can we have a bunch of thought like that? So, you don't go in and say to the city as an elected official, you don't go in and say, we want to see, um, the, the road, uh, funding increase two percent. Your challenge is to go out and find a way to make, it doesn't work that way?
What we do down typically is at the beginning of each year, we have our major planning and budgeting meeting, and it's a multi-day meeting where we, where we set priorities, we discuss the, the big picture, high-level analysis of the way that we want to approach things. And so it would be in that kind of a context where we would say to the staff, this is really where we want to see some adjustment in the way that we're looking at.
So you can do this, yeah?
So we have that opportunity in that, in that meeting, yeah? Sid?
Well, I'm sure those will be used as a standby at some point, so, um, which is okay, I'm kind of not, um, we need more sales tax revenue, we need, we need more, more business to, to increase our, our revenue and we're working on that. We've had some great slides as the graph shows this past year and an increase in sales tax revenue. And we continue to bring business in and I think we're on the, you know, the, a great, a great path. Um, Dean runs a balanced budget, award-winning, um, excellent bond rating, we have a revenue stream to pay off all of our bonds. We do ask the staff at the meeting of every year to go through and cut where they can and do whatever they can to minimize their budget. And I feel that they do that every year and they only put the, the most important things on there and then they present that list to us. And as a council, we have a responsibility to determine if that's and, and I'm confident with, with the expertise of Dean, um, Scott, our city manager, the staff and council, that we all work together on the budget. It's not just one person handling the budget, but we all work together and give our input. And this is why this process lasts over months, because it is, and in that process, I mean, this is the taxpayers' money. This is, this is very serious, you know, and I take it very seriously as a council person, this is taxpayer money. Um, and, and work together as a team to come up with the best solution to taxpayers and to make sure their needs are being met and to make sure that, that those, the things that they consider are met in our city, if they, if they want those, that we're, that we're offering those services to them, that we're doing that. And I also talk to neighboring communities, I've spoken to, to neighboring communities and council members and ask them what they're doing to, to cut budgets in our city, I like to hear, you know, ideas are out there. And, and there's an idea that it's, it's too late for this, um, budget year, but that I'd like to bring forth next year, um, the next budget year, of how a city saved, um, quite a bit of money involving the employees in, in that process. And so I'm excited to bring that forward and we're, we're doing the best we can with what we have. And that thanks to everyone here, it's not just, you know, one, one person, I mean, one person as far as Dean goes, but, um, I think we're working together and needing and caring for the residents and, and really working together to, to come up with a, a budget we can all be supportive and be happy with.
I'll go ahead. I think one thing that
I'll go ahead. I think one thing that we need to remember is the budget, we don't take the budget lightly. It's not something that we have just discussed tonight or a couple of weeks or maybe a month or so in preparation for the passing of the final budget. But we talk about it all year long. We talk about large cases. We talk about it in our retreat. We talk that when directors come up, come forward with items that are needed. And we approve them as we go through the whole, throughout the whole year, the budget year. So we're looking at the budget continually all through the year. It's not just a few weeks here at the end to, and balance the budget. We're aware of the budget all year long. Our directors come forward with those large projects and have us approve them, see how we feel. And there's oftentimes that we don't approve them. We would like to just say, yeah, go for it, you know, that would really benefit the city. But we, we do have, referring to Donna's comment, we tell them sometimes they have to wash the plastic spoons and reuse them. Times that we tell our, the directors and people throughout the community that, that, that's what we need to do. We need to reuse the plastic spoons. And I think our employees are very, very creative. Our directors, all of our employees are very creative in getting, as my mother used to say, blood out of the turnip. There's times that we have expected them to get blood out of a turnip and they've done it. The plea, fire, all, everybody, I think, we talk about volunteer in this city. And we need like to talk about the employees that offer a lot more volunteerism than I think that we really realize. They are, they do go the extra mile. They go beyond. And it's because of that, that I think that we can, you know, work with a very lean, very lean budget. I support all the programs in this city. I support what we have as a community and the way that our staff has supported those projects. I've been involved with the arts. I've been involved with the fires. I've been everything, everything. But a good part of this community is what makes the community are these programs. They work their tail ends, tail ends off in trying to provide these programs. It's what makes our community. And I, I fully support all the programs that we have. And I know that we have very, very capable people that are directing these, either through volunteerism or through our directors to make it possible that we have that many programs in this city. And I just want to say, this is not just a tonight discussion or a decision. This is a year-round discussion and a year-round decision.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll deviate slightly and give you my comments on this. Because I own a business, I, I look at budgets maybe a little differently than I used to. I worked for someone else. And so I'm looking for two specific things. One, I'm looking at, are we generating enough revenue to cover the costs, the basic costs of keeping the doors open? And continuing to grow what it is we need to grow. And those priorities were dictated by the public, whether you're in business or whether you're in government, it's all dictated by the people that you serve. Second thing I'm looking for is, are we looking for the lowest hanging fruit in areas that we can reduce? Things that will save significant amounts of money. In some case, this may require elimination of programs or services that part of our community to see or would like to continue. An example, just by saying, yes, we're going to go out and eliminate a little hanging fruit. Everybody gets excited and they say, yeah, that's great. Okay. Then you go out and specifically say, we're going to eliminate the softball program for recreation. There will be 2,000 people in here within 20 minutes to talk to us about that. Okay? If you were to say, all right, what we're going to do is cut back on police services. We're not going to provide five people to go out with training to investigate that call. We're only going to provide one person to go out. You're going to hear a lot of people come in from public safety. I think right now it's about 50% of the community at least, they're going to come in here within about 20 minutes. So let me preface this by saying that the budget that we have today, the general budget, is a reflection of the priorities and decisions that the public has made over the course of a very long time. And the commitments that have been made cannot be changed overnight because suddenly someone grew up and decided that they don't want to pay for that anymore. Just like the mortgage on your home, you can't just walk away. We have many of those in our city. And we are working currently towards eliminating those kinds of debts, saving the kinds of monies that we need to, so that we can pay them off. And then making use of those funds in the future, so that they're going directly towards things like Mrs. Jolly is saying, road maintenance and repair. Not just pothole filling with flowers or whatever that was I saw on the internet. The other two to keep in mind, again, with just the example I gave, is there are conflicting priorities within the public. Right now, we have at least three top number one priorities, at least three. I would say that with what I've heard this year, it has risen as the number one priority. Number two has probably been water because we've been in a drought, but nobody's complaining the last two, because it's raining. It's really dark. Number three now has resurfaced as this public safety endeavor and where we're headed with it. And number four is how do we get rid of programs that are just obviously losing money like Fox Hollow Golf Course? How do we just get rid of it? And so what I've asked Dean to do this year, it was actually at the beginning of this budget year, you're not going to be able to see this. But I asked him to change the formatting of the reporting on a quarterly basis. I'm looking for year-over-year performance, what the budget was the year before, what the budget was the quarter before, what the budget was to be. How are we doing as far as revenues and expenses in each of the categories? And I'm comparing that to see if we're tracking. Where there's a question, because of my past experience with the council, I already understand that some of these revenues are going to trail. They won't come in until later in the year. And some of these expenses are going to be absorbed earlier in the year. So the first thing is education. It's educating myself on how a city budget works. That's different from a home budget and from a business budget. Now, I'm not an expert, but I general budget and enterprise funds and how they work within the city. What's concerning to me are the vast number of recommendations that, that I receive through email that seem so simple on the surface as to how to solve our budget crisis. And yet they, they lack a depth of understanding of what is, what is Utah for you to run, a public entity like the city. It's your money. And if you want to default on something, you can, you can make that vote, you can make that choice. The really is, the city will be shut down, absorbed by the state of Utah so fast. You won't have a police department, fire department, public works department, anything to worry about overnight. So that's not possible. So what we need to ask, this is what to do, is gain an understanding of how the budget process works, where the monies are coming from. And then we take the priorities that the public are screaming about in a polite way. And we start to look at, what is it really going to cost the citizens to solve the problems that they want solved? And it's not about filling a pothole or paving over with a slurry seal on a road because one person complains versus another. It's a comprehensive plan that addresses all the roads in the city over a period of 20 years. And you come out balanced at the end where we no longer have failed roads. That's the kind of policy that we're implementing. And if there's one thing that we lack in the first century, is the ability to communicate with the public in a clear way. Financial priorities and financial direction on where to go. It's like one-way communication. It comes in when people are upset, but it never reaches people when the education is there or the information is there to, to give it out. So we do the best we can. Where are we today? We don't have the perfect budget. We don't have perfect revenues. We don't have perfect expenses. But we have four top priorities. The citizens of this community have clearly spoken of. And on all four of them, we have either a committee or an assigned hired engineering firm or a planning organization or some of us that are sitting down and looking at the long-term goal and directing staff to put together those plans. Every one of them to be brought back to this group, which is the citizens, to be looked at and voted upon. Whether you guys can understand it or you take the time to read it or your neighbors do, there's only so much we can do. So I take the budget very seriously. My job, manage the budget in the best interest of the public. Educate the public as best I can as to where that money's coming from and where it needs to go. And help the council who votes to move in the right direction in allocating these resources. Next.
You're going to take longer.
Matt Godsey, ten twenty-six east, eleven hundred north. Just some questions for education purpose for me, just trying to understand some things in the tentative budget. On page three hundred, engineering, the original fiscal year budget had two ninety-four thousand and it went up to five hundred and nineteen thousand. Can you explain why that was?
Right. So when I look at the, most of what's the, the increase in that is our contract engineering stuff. If you go back a few years, the issue with engineering is it's strictly related to development, right? So if you went back to two thousand nine, two thousand ten, when development was really low, you only needed this lower level of budget for our contract engineering stuff. Well, in the past three or four years, there's been a lot. I mean, you look to go Terry, look at everything else. I have, it's my feeling, I don't want to put the larger amount in the base budget because
Okay.
Somewhere down the road, we may not need it, right? Say our base initial budget's going to be the kind of ongoing year-to-year stuff. And then when there's years when we have a lot of development and we have a lot of need for this contract engineering work, we'll increase it by that time. Because during those years, we will have additional revenue from permits and things like that to pay for it. So I know it looks a little weird, but what I'm really trying to do is say, let's have a base amount for engineering. In years when we spend a lot, we'll have that additional revenue that, that every year we'll start back at the kind of base.
Now, another thing to understand along with what Dean is saying, is the money that comes to fill that extra amount is directly related to fees collected associated with. So it's money coming in to pay for the engineering that's going out.
Got it. Okay, understood. Fire, I'm assuming it's the same thing, where you did low and then had the increase for that on the operating expenditure?
Yeah. So fire, I'm trying to remember. You'll, you'll notice that sellers and wages went down.
Yes.
Overall, didn't really change that much. They had a little, fire has reorganized a few things on how they, they've just done some things. I don't exactly what that was. I don't exactly remember, but one time they had just some organizations they've done with personnel that have changed a little bit. And so, so the money that was budgeted in personnel has now budgeted in their equipment line item. It's really all of this.
Okay. And then page seven, Class C road funds. I believe the transfer to debt services, is that the bond, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And how much longer do we have to pay on that bond?
Calendar year twenty eighteen.
Okay.
I can't remember if in that fiscal year, if we have a full payment or a half payment, but it's in twenty eighteen when it's given.
Okay. And then the lease payments, was that for equipment? On the expenditures?
That is for, so out of the class C money, we have typically leased a, I'm going to say it's a front end motor. I don't know my heavy equipment like some people do, so.
But it's leasing for equipment?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then on the revenues, the Class C road funds, we have nine hundred and sixty-five thousand. Where's that coming from? That's at all tax?
That's gas tax.
That's all gas tax. Okay. And then transfer from general funds is just to supplement. Okay. And then you had a slide that showed where we're transferring funds from the general fund to other portions. Can you show that again?
And it's on page six.
Dean, while you're getting that going, a question on the back card. Was that a lease or was that a capital project for a capital?
The back card that we bought this fund, it's a, I mean, it's we go along like the loan is a lease, but we will have.
It's got to be a lease. Yes. Could you explain a little bit more about what the need is for transferring money to each of these?
Sure. So capital equipment is, so we have a fair number of leases, some, some vehicles we purchase outright, some vehicles we lease.
It's part of the fleet management program?
Yeah, it's mostly fleet, but there are other things in there too, like our computer equipment and copiers.
Okay.
Dispatches, so we have our dispatch center, the total cost to run the dispatch, and there's a dispatch fund in here on page eleven. Well, the total cost to run the dispatch is, is five hundred and ninety-eight thousand. We get two hundred and fifteen thousand from the state or the grant. And then the rest comes from our general fund, because there's no fee associated with dispatch, right? The other three, Recreation, Swimming Pool, and Arts and Culture. And we have those programs, the money that comes in related to those and pay for the full cost and so the rest of it comes from the general fund.
Okay. And on those last three, are we getting better? Is it staying the same from year to year? Is it?
Arts and culture, the same, I think, forever. Well, not forever, it's only been there for a couple of years. But Recreation Center, it's about the same. It's changed a little bit as, you know, there's been pay increases and stuff like that. You know, when we budget a, a, a pay increase for all of employees, that goes up a little bit to cover a portion of that.
Okay.
So it's not increasing drastically.
But if the pay increased as the fees for the person, membership go up? One percent, two percent?
Well, fees have been adjusted in there. Fees have been adjusted there from time to time. Yes.
When's the last time we adjusted the fees?
Well, it was just a couple of years ago and the rec center was just a couple of years ago.
I believe the rec center, the subsidized amount or the general fund transfers lower than it had been years past, is that not?
It's less than this last year. Part of that, we did, we had a year, we did some improvements in there that probably really matters.
Okay. And so that, that will fluctuate depending on what happens in there, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Things changing there a little bit here and there.
Thank you. That helped my understanding.
No, I was, I was going to say as well, and I appreciate you taking my time to ask questions in the book of the budget. That's exactly what I love the feedback on, because you're engaging, you learn, you want it, you want it, you want to educate yourself. So I really appreciate that. You know, one thing, like I said earlier about informing the employees and not just on the direct level, but on, you know, part-time, full-time employees on, you know, the kind of the first line level, on all the room, the budget. There's an employee at the rec center who said, you know, this year, I think, instead of two refs, and this is just something very, very simple. But I think it's going to start with these simple things. And it doesn't even say tens of thousands of dollars. But it's just the mindset that we're going to try if we can. And she said, you know, I can put the soccer program for the underkids, we're not keeping score. And so perhaps we can just use one. Very, very simple, but it's actually going to cut that cost in half of having another ref. And we're sort of able to get the job done with that female soccer games. And it's kind of the mindset of getting the employees and, and, you know, and all of us thinking that it's just those simple cuts. But over time, we're going to be able to find more cuts and get more creative within our program where we can. Now, I know that the directors and the departments are already doing, you know, those, those cuts because I've seen them and we've talked about them and discussed them. But I appreciate this employee saying that because it just got me thinking what's working, what's not. But I appreciate this employee saying that because it just got me thinking, what's working, what's not? You know, just because we've had this way for ten, twenty years, doesn't mean we need to continue it that way. It's always a big question outside the box on how we can save money for the residents. And so that was just one example, I know it's very, very small, and maybe would be save a couple hundred dollars over the whole season for a referee. But it's just the mindset that that's what we're heading is, what can we do to save money? Just because it's been done that way doesn't mean we need to continue, we can really look at it other ways, so.
I really appreciate that, because, you know, I have six kids in a large house and it's, we live on a very tight budget, so that's the way I live, and that's the way I approach things like this in both my business and in city budget, wherever I can help, I'm looking for things. Obviously, the big-ticket items are the ones that give me address first, but what I found in my personal experience is the small daily things on a day-to-day basis. Going to the grocery store two times a month instead of two times a week makes a huge difference on your gas bill and maintenance of the car and everything else. And so those are some of the things that I've implemented in my life, is the day-to-day things, which does save in the large bag. And it really does, like you said, get you in the mindset for the larger things, you know, big decisions. Are you looking to get the most of your money and do as much as you can with the budget that you're given? If we don't do those day-to-day small things, I think we are never going to be able to get to the point where we make the right decision or the best decision on the large items because we aren't already accustomed to making the difficult budget decisions.
Okay, wait, wait, what?
Yeah.
I, so when I was elected a year, you know, you get the budget for the first time and you're so excited about, what can I do to contribute a thought or a process of maybe catch some spending? I didn't realize how lean we were running, and I think this comes from eons and eons of years and years of running programs very lean. This before, but it impacted me so heavily. After this last snowstorm, the only snowstorm that we had Christmas morning. And I was watching the news and Taylorsville Public Works Director was being criticized for not clearing the roads quick enough. And he said, people, you've got to understand, I've only got thirteen guys and thirteen trucks. Well, we had five guys and five trucks. So Taylorsville is actually almost equal to us, they're in our bracket for population. He says, I have a hundred and twenty roads, well, we have a hundred and twenty miles of road. So we run lean because of a great history of running lean. We're and we do so much with the amount of people that we have actually on staff. So when I look at the budget of personnel, we run lean and we pay at the low end of the pay scale. And so, and that just hats off to a lot of people that have been, have sat here before.
I really don't doubt that we're running lean at all. I think in a lot of aspects, we are doing a good job as a city. I kind of home to the mayor's comments about how a business is run. If you're starting up a brand-new business, you look at a five-year pro forma, and if you're not making any profit after four or five years, you can show losses the first three years. And then after four or five years, you gotta start making sure that you're making profit. It's gonna continue making profit after that point. I know a lot of the budget problems have been inherited, they're there, the roads are in the condition that they are. But if we show a trajectory where we're gonna have some losses and then be able to bounce back and be profitable over time, that's where my concern is. And if we can do that, I'm okay with the losses and the transfers of funds and everything else in the short term, as long as when we come out of it on the other end, we are more fiscally responsible and better off as a city overall. Because, like you said, we can't run at a negative forever, we just can't. So whatever it takes to get us to a point to where we are in the positive, ongoing for the life of the city, that's really what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Any?
Those four sixty-six east, first south. First of all, let me just say this off the budget. This group that we had in from the school tonight was great, what they're doing, but they come from a tradition of it. Sometime, the council ought to take some time and go back to nineteen fifty-five. There may be a few in here that can remember it, but in nineteen fifty-five, Pleasant Grove won every state championship that was possible to get in high school, including debate, including tennis, you name it, they won it. And then to top it off, they had a ward team win the all-church basketball tournament for the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. So they come from a, they come from a good leaning, you ought to get some of those old guys in here sometime and let them talk to you, because no other city has ever been able to do that. The other thing is, Councilmember Lamone, you can get a cheer like that on the telephone if you'll take care of the roads for Mrs. Jolly, they'll yell yay for Pleasant Grove. I, I'm here to stick up for, I, and I'm sad to say this, but I heard some comments after last city council meeting that this fine lady made fun of and treated a little bit rudely because of, she's the little old lady that always comes in and complains about the roads. Well, she's the squeaking wheel that will end up getting something, something taken care of. Now, one of the questions, I want to ask my questions because it's been great to hear the discussion here. All of you have indicated you've got into the budget. You know, you feel like you under the ninety-something pages that's in there and at least got a little bit of knowledge on it, and I'm glad to hear that because my questions are gonna be specifically to city council members, not to the staff, because these, these people over here don't get to vote. This man doesn't get to vote. You five are the one that is gonna vote on what's gonna be approved here. So my questions are gonna be to you to see if you can help me make sure that, that you understand and so that I can feel comfortable with what you've presented to the city, to be, and citizens, to be able to, to approve. So I would like to start and cutting, let's do this, let's do that. Which city council member was over the golf course last year?
I was.
Assigned to the golf course?
I was.
I thought this was your first year.
So last year I was.
Golf course committee last year?
Yes.
Okay, how much did we subsidize golf course last year?
A hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
The figures that we show here are two hundred and forty. Two hundred and forty thousand dollars, there had been, there had been a a reach of two hundred and fifteen, if I read the budget figures right. And I want to compliment Dean, he's gonna, he's presented this so that it's, even I can partly understand it. He shows, he shows in the prior year, it was two hundred and forty thousand. He shows that you budgeted two hundred and fifteen at the beginning of the year, and you ended up paying, it looks like it's gonna be another two hundred and forty thousand. And you've budgeted another two hundred and twenty dollars this year. The question I have, what that reflects then, is that if everything is been doing the way it should, that the golf course is six hundred, gonna be over, excuse me, last year was seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars over its budget. And so we, the three had to make up the difference. We're anticipating this year that there'll be another six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And I take it that the figure that we're looking at is just from past experience, is that right?
What figure that we're looking at?
The figure we're looking at here, that you're taking out of the general fund.
You talked about the two hundred and forty thousand, am I correct?
I agree. Okay, so from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong. In eighteen sixty-something, there was the Tri-Cities came with an inter-local agreement. In nineteen seventy-five?
Sixty-nine was the first inter-local, okay, so we'll have that.
When that inter-local agreement was made, American Fork and the three cities went in, Tri-Cities golf, and they made the golf course. And then in, and how many years ago did we do the improvements?
Two thousand seven.
Two thousand seven, we also were bonded for improvements. That's the bond payment.
Right, the bond, okay, and that's the point I'm getting at with you, to try and find out. The bond payment was issued then, and so that means we've been paying two thousand seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen?
Was it twenty-year? It's a twenty-year.
It's a twenty-year bond, but we've been paying for seven years on it.
Right.
Okay. In the pro forma for the bond, it indicated that the golf course would be able should be able to cover the bond and operating expenses within four years. Now, we've gone well over years, and so the question I would, not question, throw this out to the city council, as a citizen, for you to take a look at, and I'm an avid golfer, I love when this bond was brought up, I recommended we not do it. Serving as city administrator, as we had our discussions, I recommended we not do it. But the problem that we're gonna run into, and I think that we ought to do as a city, consider it, is pulling out. Now, they can tell us, okay, you've got to pay the bond. How much is our, how much is the bond payment?
That's the two
The two hundred and forty is
The bond payment is supposed to count a revenue. If they, if Pleasant Grove City the bond, it would be less than this two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
I think if you read the bond documents, our revenue is, it's not just for bond payment, but for the operations of the facility.
Okay, then we would still, if we had to make the bond payment, would still be less than this two twenty, because this two twenty covers part of the operation, operation costs shortfall also. And so what I'm saying is, rather, if we, if we have to pay less for the bond, and we got people in Pleasant Grove, they're here playing, they say, wait a minute, I get a discount when I go over there and buy a family pass. Well, you can buy a whole lot of family passes. If a person goes over and can save a hundred dollars if he's a Pleasant Grove City resident, brings his receipt back here and says, I paid, I need the hundred dollars back. I think it's over a hundred passes out from Pleasant Grove, it may not be that many right now. That's less than ten thousand dollars. And so I'm looking and saying, okay, we've budgeted, there's this two hundred and twenty thousand dollars is obviously somewhere here in the city that we're gonna ship it to the golfers, which would probably be two hundred and forty thousand. Why can't we throw that in, pull out and throw that money into the, into help with that one seven million dollars that we've got now? All of a sudden, we're pushing closer to one, we're pushing closer to the two million dollar mark of having that money to cover the roadwork. So that's the first thing I'd like to consider is what
Can I address that just quick? There's actually a liquidation clause in the operating agreement, and I'm excited, I did some research on this, and it, there's liquidation clause in the operating agreement, it requires agreement of all three cities to liquidate the assets of the golf course, and it does not include the real product that is owned by American Fork that they use for some of their water system. So even if you wanted to liquidate all the equipment and stuff, including the clubhouse, at least some of the land would not be available to sell off. The bonds will not be paid off until twenty twenty-seven, and we are not in a position to sell the golf course. Also, no, the golf course land is free to be sold, and the proceeds divided. Some of that land is American Fork's, but what do you mean with them, with those parcels? I actually contacted a city council member from American Fork, who said this time, their council's not interested in selling.
Discussion that I ever say we sell the golf course, I says Pleasant Grove can pull out. Pleasant Grove can pull out as long as that bond is getting paid, and Pleasant Grove pays a share. I was, I was on the city council when the golf course started back in the seventies. I was, I've served, I served on it until I retired. And when these, when this bond thing was made up, that was one of the issues that we had. Pleasant Grove City can pull.
Okay, I think we're going back to the mayor's point, though, that it seems easier than it is. We can't fault we have an agreement with three other cities. We legally are obligated that we cannot do that. So I think these are some of the things where it looks easier on paper, but we can't legally do that.
Frank, Frank?
But
I think, yeah, I know you did want to, but I think Tina could give us a great insight on this. Because I think some of those fifty thousand operating expenses every year that we give them, and the rest goes to bond, pretty close to it. But like Sid said, you can't just pull out obligations without
You can, you can, you can, and this is what I'm asking you as a council, because you're the ones that's got to vote on it. Go talk to them and talk to your bond council and find out, and they'll tell you that you can as long as that bond gets paid.
I talked to American Fork's city council, and it's going to also hold the same input, I think, as we're not invested this time. And there's other entities involved.
You don't need American Fork, you can do it on your own.
What he's saying is, is this, can we just not pay?
Our question.
Okay, so I think perhaps this is what will shed a little bit of light on the question. When we decided to be involved in helping them do the remodeling, and Frank, you should remember this.
Yep.
The bond council said that we had to create a whole separate entity, the Tri-City Golf Course Agency.
Correct.
So in that inter-local cooperative agreement that we signed as a contract, where it talks about termination of the agreement, of the operating agreement, it's going to be in effect for fifty, for thirty years. After the effect here, at the date here of, or such date as upon which all bonds of the TCIA and other contractual obligations have been retired, but in no event later than fifty years after the effective date. Upon termination of the inter-local agreement, the title to all the assets of the TCIA shall revert to the parties in proportion to their commitment to secure the bond payments. And I'm looking for the part that talks about the liquidation.
What, you know, what you're reading there is what the original is, and it's been more than the thirty years. A separate agreement was made, bonds.
This is the one we signed in two thousand seven.
Right, but that first part is taken from the original contract.
Right, but we re-signed this in two thousand seven.
But the thirty years was back at the beginning of the original contract. And so I would ask the council
I'm very open to look at that.
To take, to take a look at that, that's two hundred and twenty thousand. The, the other issue that we looking at money for the streets, I think it was a sales tax bond. Who's working with the streets now?
I am.
Rest of you don't do anything. The, I think there's a sales tax bond for the Pleasant Grove Boulevard.
Yes.
When does that get paid off?
Eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen.
No. Twenty twenty-two, so twenty twenty-two, how much is that payment each year?
General fund portion.
But anyway, when we start talking about not cutting, there's a source of revenue. Now, I realize it's act of waves, but unless you're willing to make a commitment now, that you would be willing to commit.
I could say something I would do. So that's getting paid with impact fees?
No, it's sales tax.
It's a sales tax bond, but we're paying all of that.
Right, with the impact fees, but it's back for the sales tax, right? Okay, so if we're gonna, if we're gonna use impact fees, it's gotta be for related to growth, so widening projects and things like that. So if you've got road projects, that the roads are gonna be widened to increase traffic flow, you can use that, the impact fee that is being used for the Boulevard right now, I'd appreciate it if the council would take a look at that. There's all these little places that all of a sudden, money up, and I would dare say that if you were, if you were to go much further and then go to the citizens of Pleasant Grove and say, listen, is it possible, and I don't know how you do bonds, we have financial people to do that, but it would be, I would think it would be possible to do as a school does, to where you say, okay, we're gonna bond, we wanna bond, we're gonna take out this many bonds right now because we can pay for it. This money in the futures, we can go for it as we go up, so that the citizens don't bite off such a big chunk right at the, right at the beginning, the same way the school districts, they've done it for years, do their, do their bond, so I would like you to, to take a look at, a look at that. So I would like you to, to take a look at, uh, a look at that.
Okay, so time out. I gotta understand that. So there's a, a impact fee that we collect from a new development coming in.
Right.
And that goes into the, a se- it's a sales tax.
The bond, the, the Pleasant Grove Boulevard.
I'm sorry, can you not make comments? I just, I'm hearing stuff that you're saying, and it's rude. Can you not make comments, please? That would be appreciated. Thank you.
I think the question is whether we're making payment with me.
No, be next to Anthony.
So, but in the Pleasant Grove Boulevard, we are repaying that bond with impact fee money.
Okay.
Really impact fee money, water impact fee money.
Okay.
And so I guess my point was, it doesn't.
But it's a sales tax revenue bond.
It's backed by sales tax.
We wedged our sales tax revenue stream as, for the bonding company as security. That's not where we're actually using the bond.
It's, it's kind of similar to the golf course budget. It's backed by Pleasant Grove City, Lynden, Lehigh, and American Fork. So they don't, I wonder if they want.
So you're just saying to look at pledge, when that retires in twenty two,
Yeah, look.
Retire, just put that into the road money.
I'm saying that use it on roads that it's legal to use it on for, for increased traffic. That'll fall under the, uh, uh, impact fee law.
Right. So, um, Provo is doing a really cool thing. As their bonds retire, then they put that money then, so if a resident was paying three dollars, uh, and that bond retires, there's, they're just putting that then in a transportation fee on the utility bill. And then, so as every bond retires, they're just hooking that up to that transportation.
There's, there's many ways to do it, and that's what, that's what we elect you five individuals to work with the staff to, to come up with those things. Now, the other, the other one that I'm concerned with is, and again, Councilman Lamonge, and this was before the last elections, the comment to me was, I'm not going to vote for another apartment or condo in this town until they come in with some retail business. I want some sales tax. Hallelujah, what a fresh air. But if we're, we've seen the increase in the sales tax there, we all look at that, that's great. I would like to have Dean, if he would, for the council, and then he can have it for the next council meeting, if we want to look at it, show how much Pleasant Grove's portion of the sales tax has increased compared to the portion we get from the state. You know, we look at that and say, ooh, our sales tax is really up. Well, our sales tax isn't really up. The state's portion that they give us is, is really, and so I, I, I think we need to take a look at that and say, okay, what are we going to do about economic development? And as I look at the budget here with economic development, eighty-eight thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, well, just, just over eleven thousand dollars to pay for somebody part-time to be able to do it. Now, ten, twelve years ago, we had a full-time economic development director, Paul Blanchard. A fantastic job. In fact, a lot of the businesses that's in around Smiths, he didn't bring Smiths in, but a lot of the businesses around Smiths brought in with Paul. A lot of the, the Macy's down here development was bought in because Paul was able to take the lead and be out there to, to lead on it. A lot of these retail businesses that we got came from having somebody full-time out there on the line doing the job. That's what, that's what's going to increase our sales tax. You've had some great industrial development, I call it, Datara and some of those, that's done a fantastic job. They're going to bring in some property tax, but they're not bringing in the sales tax. And so we need to, we need, I feel like, we need to, to, uh, do a reassessment and do what we can do trying to bring in someone for that economic development that's going to be out there on the front line all the time. Because you're going head-to-head with cities that are killing us, and they're going to continue to do it, and we are finally going to win by default. We're going to win by default. We're going to have the only land left. And so we're going to get the break-offs that, that they want to come in with. And I just think that we need to have somebody to, in there to do it. And every one of you with your election talked about getting this economic development thing going well. To me, the way we get the economic development isn't by, uh, cutting it. It's, you know, if you, if Dean was to put a graph like this, and that is not what we want, uh, that is not what we want to have happen with it, I don't think. Now, public safety, the public safety building, tell, I was on the fire department. I, public safety's near and dear. But what the people in Pleasant Grove have asked for are the roads. And I'm going to tell you, in economic, I'm going to give you two examples face-to-face. This isn't hearsay. This is setting across the table with the people, not one. Steve Miner from Associated Grocers did not ask this question. The representative, I can't remember his name, from Smith, did not ask the question. Can I go up and look at your public safety facilities or your city hall or your library? But both of them asked this question. What kind of roads do you have? People to our business. That's why you see a, a, to get that, uh, uh, boulevard built. That's why Seventh South, State Street, and some of the Geneva Road was improved, because of Smiths. They ask, how are you going to get people into our, uh, into our businesses? And so I really think that between now, when you adopt this, you ought to really take a hard look and come up with, uh, what we're going to, uh, how we're going to handle it, if we can go to the full-time. The last one I have, and you'll be glad to hear me end this, but question again. Two budgets outside of York, well, you have control, but you don't. Tepanoga Special Service District and the golf course. I asked this question in these people's behalf and all the employees' behalf in Pleasant Grove. How much of a pay raise, what percentage pay raise did we, did they approve at the golf course and Tepanoga Special Service District for their employees? Is it more, is it a higher percentage pay our own employees here in Pleasant Grove? Do you know what it was? So that's another thing we need to know, because if we're willing, they're a, they're an offshoot of Pleasant Grove, and we're willing to pay them down at the tree plant or over at the golf course, more money than willing to pay our own employees, and then subsidize it to the tune of a quarter of a million dollars a year. Something does not add up. And so I see it, the responsibility that, that, that you have, and I just listened to, to Councilman Boyd and to Councilman Lamonge say about what great employees we have and how good they are. Are we going to shortchange them at the expense of the other, uh, two budgets that we have to work with?
So I'd like to, thanks, Frank, for, for those comments. A couple of things I'd like to address. One, shortchanging, we actually, um, are bringing our employees up to the mid-range neighborhood and communities. We've been doing a study over the past about year and a half, two years, to bring them up to their salary range, to where they're mid-range with our other cities. So we are addressing that.
I, I have no, I have no problem with what you're addressing for our employees. My question is, is if this council is approving two other budgets, because you should be, you should be approving the sewer department, the sewer plant budget and the golf course budget. Are you approving that with a higher percentage increase for their employees than you are for our employees in this budget here? That's what we need to know.
Do we, uh, do we approve TSSD's budget?
Well, we can sit on a board and set.
We have one board, and we're on the board.
Somebody from our city better be approving it. It sits on the committee, or we're in trouble.
Councilmember Meek has sat on the board. I don't know if he still does, or if he still does.
And, and as far as, um, Frank, can you address any regarding the agreement? What I told you was true when I ran last time for city council. I have worked very hard to limit the number of high-density housing. In fact, last week, um, we discussed, uh, trying to don out more high-density housing in the Grove. I'm the one who brought that forward. Um, I voted no to the, the high-density to come in that, that we didn't already have legislation to have come in. We can't vote no. It would be against the law for some, we're already in the works for the past several years. Um, I've, we've approved businesses coming in. We've, um, limited the, like I said, that don't need to try and be more, um, develop, developer, commercial developer friendly. Um, so there are things we have done.
But I, I.
Like telling you that. I wouldn't pick up if I wanted to do it.
But this, uh, this points out why we need to be careful. Promises we make before, uh, we're aware of the law and everything we have. But if you look at all of the apartments and condos that's gone in, in the last four years, far exceeds the retail.
So Frank, I have just one question for you. Frank? I just have one question for you, all time. So is this your first campaign speech?
No, I learned that lesson a couple of weeks ago. How's that?
So let me, let me see if I understand what, what Frank has shared. We have opportunities in front of us to further explore saving money on things like Palo Golf Course, TSSD, um, the sales tax revenue that, or the bond that we created for PG that we maybe haven't looked at quite the creative way that you're talking about. And they could yield some, yield somewhere in the half a million to a million dollar reach a year that we could be allocating to other things within the city. Kind of what you're saying?
Yes, I, I, I think a million dollars is the outside, but there is some money there without cutting into the, uh, because I know that, that, uh, these staffs sitting over here don't like to hear that word, cut. And, uh, because normally that means that it's a benefit to them that's going to be lost. And that's not what you want to have happen. But there are where areas that you can make adjustments, and there's areas that you maybe want to, well, the reason I bring up the economic development, that's going to drive the engine. I don't, I don't care what you say, that's, that's, unless you've got some of the outwash, then you're not going to get the sales tax you have.
Thanks, Frank. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
Bill West at forty-eight North fourteen hundred East in Pleasant Grove. Let me, if, if we can continue on with the Fox Hollow thing for just a minute, do we know how much those bond payments are?
You know, I was trying to calculate that, and I'm not, I, I don't have those documents. But what I calculated was, if you take the total amount of the bond, which I think was four point eight eight million over twenty years, and you straight-line, no interest rate, just kind of straight-line it over twenty years and divide it by three, comes out to somewhere around eighty-two thousand dollars a year for Pleasant Grove's portion. So if we're subsidizing a two hundred and forty, that means there's another hundred and fifty-eight. So I'm going to round down just to be safe, because you've got to account for interest. There's probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of subsidy that we're paying towards Tepanoga or to Fox Hollow.
Okay, and I, because I ran the numbers, if, yeah, yeah, if it's six hundred thousand, you could buy a ten point five million dollar building. It wasn't nearly that. So I think you're really close in that. And I guess my suggestion is, wouldn't we be better off to close the golf course rather than continue to subsidize it?
I think that's the question, the creative question Frank is asking, that I don't think we, as a council, understand. We've been under the belief that we don't have the ability to shut it down or to remove ourselves from the agreement because we're somehow tied with American Fork and Lehigh. What we need to do is go back, look at our agreements, and see if there's a way we can still honor the eighty to ninety dollar bond payment a year and save a hundred and fifty in, in operational costs.
Great.
Just pull out.
Okay.
But we can look at it.
I think that we'd love to hear the result of your investigation with that. I'm going to mess some things up here, but anyway.
This is still the kinder and gentle.
Yeah, it is. It's gentle and kind, but it's a little, you know, we'll stir some trouble up. Yeah, gentle, gentle. Iron County recently sold their ambulance service for one point five million dollars to Gold Cross. Their cost is zero on a, on a annual basis. Have we looked into that?
You know, we haven't looked into exactly what you're saying, uh, eliminating ambulance services, uh, at least as a council. I don't think that's been discussed. It may be, uh, it may be a sacred cow issue, you know, where we, we have decided not to address, no one's brought it up. But that's something that we could look into. It may be extremely unpopular. We may be afraid to do that. There may be ramifications, uh, with the citizens and with our own staff.
I understand. We certainly ought to look at it and get the information. I know Provo and St. George both have Gold Cross, and, and I think it's a viable alternative.
Are you saying?
Did we have Gold Cross ever before?
No.
Not when we were volunteer?
Maybe we're building for us right now.
Okay, that's why I remember.
We provide the service.
Our, our fire budget amount is nearly two million dollars. And I understand we had two fires last year. That's a million dollars a fire. Are there some things we could do with that?
When you say we have two.
Yeah, my understanding is that we had two residential fires last year. Is that?
Chief, Chief Thomas, can you speak to the budget or how many fires, or what, what that money's going towards?
The, uh, fire call number, um, not just, um, structure fires, but fire-related numbers are around three hundred and fifty.
I understand that. But my understanding is most of those are not fire structure-related. Is that correct? Pardon?
Are they structural in nature or?
No.
Okay, so related, but they may not be a fire. It, it may be a pan on the stove or.
Or we get a smoke alarm, I mean, something going off like that, or a CO deal, yeah. My understanding, actual two structure fires last year. I don't.
So you're saying actual, after the case.
I got a house burning.
Right, after the case, when they've investigated, they roll the truck, we find out that it's not a rush fire.
Right.
And they dealt with whatever.
Yes, yes. Are there other ways that we can do that to lower the budget significantly?
We have our paramedic service as well that goes out on calls. It's not just fire.
I, I understand. We were at Smith's the other night. They had a lady, I think, sprain her ankle, and we've got the EMTs and the hook and ladder truck all for a sprained ankle. So I think there might be some efficiency things we could do there. Anyway, those, those, you know, I told you, we're going to stir up some things. Sid talked about, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lamonge talked about, um, the saving a referee at soccer. And, and I think that's great. Do we need an assistant city manager? I understand that the city engineer and the city attorney have both requested increase of budget for some staff members for this coming budget. Do we need that, though, compared to a referee? What other things can we do to save money? We talk about contract engineering. I know we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars there. We've got a full-time engineer. What can we do to utilize our engineering better so we don't have to spend that kind of money? You know, I mean, it, it all adds up, and there, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars here that we're spending that I believe we can be more creative and, and us.
Yeah, so before you go too far on that, like, I don't want to let it sound like we're not doing anything. Because when it comes to things like the outside engineering services contract, track what is, how much savings can be made by bringing some of that engineering in-house and providing that with an engineer that's hired by the city as opposed to contracting it.
Right.
And we've looked at that, and, and I think we're, we're getting close to evaluating how to make happen because the number has grown.
It's huge.
The other part of that, though, is when we experience the downturn, then there's a corresponding layoff or elimination of service. So some of this goes on like rather quickly, uh, as you know, with construction industry. Um, on the assistance minister, I think what we're looking at here, and we're going to probably talk about this tonight when we get into headcount, we're, we're trying to develop it that is, that is needed for the staff that exists within the city right now. What we're finding is, with the, with the exception of the, um, net leadership course that Scott has developed and is walking people through, we haven't been really successful at developing management programs, um, educating. we haven't been really successful at developing management programs, educating hiring, really taking care of, you know, their, their concerns when they need to talk to someone. It's sort of been a shared effort and farmed out. So we, we're kind of leaning so much towards the assistant city administrator more towards each of us.
How many employees do we have in the city?
What do we have now? Full-time permanent? Pardon me?
One oh five.
And then the part-time permanent? Okay, and then seasonal? Hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty.
Thank you. Another one that, that have we looked at combining dispatch? My understanding is, and some of this I'm getting, but I understand sometimes while nine one one in Pleasant Grove, we end up having an Orem dispatcher take care of that for us. And I think that happens.
No, we need to address that. That's the dispatches that comes directly to us. It doesn't go to Orem and then come back. It goes directly to us.
So no call from nine eleven in Pleasant Grove ever goes to Orem?
The only way that would happen is if you have a cell phone call and you happen to be in an area that has a cell phone tower in another city, that would be a possibility. It can happen vice versa. Either way, it doesn't matter where you are. And so those, those are transferred back to the appropriate city.
Okay. I, I've had a couple of people tell me they call nine one one and, and they, there was some question, they say, where are you located? I'm in Orem. The, the dispatch operator says, I'm in Orem. So yeah, it could be a cell phone tower. Anyway, we're, 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 our total cost is five hundred thousand. We're subsidized to three hundred and eighty thousand. What can we do to be more efficient with that? How can we save some money combined with, with another city and, and take care of that? I don't know whether you've looked into that, but I think.
Been approached by their cities to take on their dispatch. And after quoting them on the amounts that would be required, you find that they're, they're really just trying to shop and see if they can get a better deal where they're at. That doesn't mean that it still can't happen, but.
Well, I'm saying, can we do the other thing? Can we shop and, and get somebody to take care of ours?
I've looked into that a little bit, Phil. And there's, um, the common is a scale that can be achieved, but the reality is a lot of our money comes from a nine one one service that didn't go to that. If we went, if we joined county, for example, that nine one one money would go on their country, Pleasant Grove. And the payments are actually pretty comparable. And we do enjoy some greater control.
I, no question we have. And I think we have some advantages.
County, county does the per-call cost analysis. So every, every call that comes into their center, they bill back to the city. They're running our numbers and it is pretty much comparable. You're losing service and you're paying the same money.
Okay. And you've, you look at the total cost, everything.
For me, I think it's a safety, sorry, a safety issue more than anything. If we have our own dispatch, it comes to us. It doesn't go to county. I know the, the death that we had in American Fork Canyon up long ago, I think for the avalanche. Time was so wasted because they could not route that, that into the county and then have to go to Highland or Long Peak and time is wasted.
Yeah, they didn't even know what they had, I think, at that point. It was, I, I'm aware of where the, the issue is. See, I was on the council when we first instituted our own dispatch. But I'm now, at these dollars, I'm saying, what, you know, what can we look at and how can we handle this?
The other issue on that, just to make a point, is a complete wash. If we were to get rid of our dispatch center, you're still going to have to retain office personnel. They're, they're doing some multitasking. They're taking calls for our water department. They're off hours. So you're still going to have to have some costs that you're going to have to keep within the city. It's not a complete wash. It's just a major thing to look at.
Thank you. And I just, the history of the golf course, I thought you'd be interested in that. In, early on, we started the golf course and, and our subsidy was about fifty thousand dollars a year. In the nineties, we directed the, our, the golf course committee to, to get rid of that and to make it pay as you go. And they did that. So I'm, and I'm not sure when I started back, but from early nineties, probably till into the two thousands, there was zero golf course subsidy. And then with the, you know, and it's just, it's just a management situation normally with all of that. So I, I, I would encourage you to take a look at zero-based budgeting. You know, Ben, I think you're right on with that. Oh, how the departments do they commit? Here's last year's budget. Here are knees down. Here we go. I think we need to look at a revenue-driven costing and, and expenses rather than, you know, one of the things that we do at the city is we say, what are cities of comparable size and population to us? What are their expenditures? What are their salaries? Why don't we say, what are cities comparable revenue to us paying? What are their salaries and what are their expenditures? You know, we're going to get ourselves further and further behind if we don't base our expenditures on revenue and, and, and everything that we do with this. It's why we can't do anything with roads and other things. So anyway, that's my encouragement. We appreciate what you're doing. Yes.
Your time has Attorney Pearson or Vigan come to us specifically and said, I want to hear his, I want to make sure that that's.
I didn't say that. I said they wanted an increase in budget for personnel thought. And that's, that was my understanding for the budget. I don't know. Is that not?
What I told the council was that that is a possibility in the future based on the criminal code changes that were done this year. We're going to see a significant increase in our misdemeanor caseload. And our attorney right now is already working miracles and working very lean. He's on a very tight hour schedule. He can't work over a certain amount, twenty-five hours a week. And he's getting a lot of work done for twenty-five hours.
Great.
So there is no increase in my budget for personnel this year.
Good. Great. Thank you.
Phil, let's address this at a macro level for a second. I think we've absolutely.
Yeah, it's fine.
We've absolutely opened up areas that we can look at. When the five of us or six of us get together and actually think and starts suggesting them, there's about thirty-five thousand people in the city and they're all going to have their opinions on which sacred cow get looked at and, and whether or not they, whether or not they share the vision that that's what should happen. What I, what I'd be interested to know is are the citizens willing to step forward en masse and in absolute unity and super majority to support the analysis of these things and stick with those decisions? Or is it left to the six people and the five to vote and they're standing alone? I think that's one of the difficulties that's a reality that we, that we face is completely alone to make some of these tough decisions without the support of the majority of the public behind these types of cuts that need to be made. So there's going to have to be a lot of people in the community that stand up and actually voice the same opinion that they want these services cut, that they want these reductions to take place. And so far, we haven't felt that. We feel quite the opposite. What we feel is a city that's massively divided on one end of the spectrum and on the other. Somewhere between being completely liberal and being ultra-conservative, right here in the rest of the red. So that's kind of, that's one of the issues that we face.
I understand. You know, I've sat in the seat. I know that, I know the feeling with the people. But we've got to do a better job of the way we spend our money.
We all need to do a better job, all of us.
I understand.
Not just the five of us.
Well, but you're, you're the ones who wanted to be there and we've elected you.
And we stand proud to do what the people of Pleasant Grove want us to do.
All right.
So we're looking for the vast majority of the Pleasant Grove residents to come forward and back with those decisions. Ultimately, that's what's going to happen. It's going to be what the super majority in this city wants. It's not just five people.
So I understand. But what have you done to budget? You know, in businesses, I mean, we, most businesses through the last several years hacked away at their budget significantly. Our budget, you know, our business, we have, our payroll is, is forty percent of what it was originally. What has the city done to, to, to lower their expenditures?
The city has continued to provide the same level of services that the people of the city have requested in an increasing inflationary economy with decreasing purchasing power. And yet we're asked to supply the same kind of services with a decreasing dollar.
Not true.
That is true. If you take a look at our bus and you take a look at the number of services that are being requested of the majority of the citizens, our money is going to pay for things like bonds and service that we're continuing to go through. And I think that we really need to analyze this and we need to look at this holistically, not just soundbites.
But you're missing a major piece.
What's that?
Roads.
Roads, roads are one item in and of itself.
Yes, but we have decreased what we are spending on roads in years.
How do you mean?
No.
I can show you, I can show you.
Well, go ahead and just explain it to us.
Well, I'm more concerned now than when I first came to the meeting. A careful analysis of the financial statements of the city show that we have increased spending in every department except Public Works.
Commander's.
Every year.
Okay, wait, explain why. I, I, I do want to say this. So when I started studying the budget, we were spending three hundred and eighty thousand dollars on roads. We're now up to seven.
Seven. Forty this year, I think. But it's, it's an amount that's fluctuating.
Let's give, let's give Lane a chance to express himself and flesh it out.
Mayor, you, you've expressed a statement that in an inflationary period, we've increased services across the board. And I don't believe that that is a true statement.
I think you're right. I think we have not increased services across.
We have decreased services on roads. And we have funded the increase in every other department by taking from what perhaps should have been spent on roads.
Okay, stick to roads for a second and tell us what you mean. Give us some numbers to, to back up what you're saying.
Okay.
By the way, it's not a challenge. It's, we need to get to the detail and we need to get to the reality or we can't solve any problems.
It's a challenge. I've been working hard to figure it out.
Right. That's why I'm asking him to share it with us.
Well, if you look at the spending trend for each department over the last ten years, you have a steady increase in spending in public safety, parks and recreation, general administration. Every department except roads. Public Works has had a decrease.
Works or roads?
I'm talking about both.
Okay, can you stick to those subjects and tell us what it's him?
Verify. Well, have you looked at the financial statements? Have you?
One at a time. Let's, let's let Lane go ahead and.
Have you analyzed the auditive statements of the city? Okay.
Direct up here, please.
Okay. If you look at the financials and you look at departmental spending, you will see that Public Works, which includes road spending, has decreased over the last number of years where everything else has increased.
Okay.
Out of the general fund, yes.
All right, but.
Including the.
Roads themselves. Talk about the class C road funds and whether that has increased or decreased over those same periods of time.
Class C road funds?
Yes.
Stayed relatively constant.
Where does that money come from?
Comes from the gas tax.
Correct. Do we have control over that?
Nope.
Okay. What have we supplemented the class C road funds with in order to affect some kind of increase in spending?
What other options do we have?
Two hundred thousand dollars a year from the general fund.
Okay. Mayor and council, I have been involved in the retreat and the budget discussions there. I have been involved in every budget discussion since. And I'm just not seeing it. I'm not seeing how you propose a rash solution to what you have already identified as a major need. To the tune of four to five?
Four million, not more. It's actually a little.
Three point six.
That is correct.
Four million just to stay on par. Right?
No, three point five to four million dollars according to our outside will bring over a twenty-year period, every road in Pleasant Grove last failing into a sustainable drivable surface.
Over twenty years.
Over a twenty-year period. You can shorten that, but you're going to have to put more into timeframe then.
Well, everything I've seen shows that we are significantly short of getting close to three point six million dollars a year.
That is correct.
Which means we're falling behind.
That is correct.
And we're not, we're not proposing anything.
That is not correct. And if you have said that you've been involved in our studies and you've been involved in our retreats, then you were present when we had J U B present the road discussion. And we've had two other road discussions since then in this meeting. We are working on a plan that has to go before the plan on how we're going to solve the road problem.
Okay. I've been there to hear J U B's expression of what we need to do. Not seeing is any realistic proposal or attempt to try and fund what needs to happen to keep our roads from falling further and further behind. But yet that shows an increase in public safety, an increase in parks and recreation, an increase in general administration. Yes, a minor increase in road spending, but it's not because our road fund, road funds went up. We're using unused funds from prior years to get that additional.
We're actually using unused revenue from current year or the previous year to put extra money towards the road fund for the next year.
Now, but that still is a very small amount.
To your point, you are correct. The study is not complete. There are other components that need to be completed. One of them is the implementation of the gas tax that the state legislature approved this year for class C road funds. I think it was, how much was it for the class C road funds?
Hundred and seventy-seven.
Hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And still under dispute and need to be voted on is the fourth quarter cent where they've allocated forty percent of that to go to the cities.
Which is projected to give us how much?
With, which is projected to give us another.
Three hundred and eighty thousand?
Three hundred and eighty.
I've heard two hundred thousand, I've heard two hundred thousand dollar numbers as well on that.
Yeah, it also started off at eight hundred.
Okay, so you're approaching five hundred thousand here.
Right. Then in twenty eighteen, you pay off the final road.
Of which our payment is seven hundred and seventy thousand or so.
We're already putting how many thousand, how many hundred thousand towards roads now?
Depends on the year.
This upcoming year at seven thirty.
Plus the seven hundred, plus the four to five hundred thousand coming from these two proposed tax increases. How much is it?
You're pushing a million and a half somewhere in that neighborhood.
I'm pushing quite a bit more than a million and a half.
Three million?
No, not three million. Now, the big question really.
So you're, you're not even half.
The big question is, these roads belong to all of us. We all have on these roads. What are we willing in terms of other services in order to make up the gap? Or do we, as a people, want to continue to let our roads deteriorate faster than we can keep them up? Now, we've had some recommendations on ways that we can cut, very specific recommendations from two individuals who have put out possibly hundreds of thousands of dollars that could be saved. And they need to be looked at. But if you're looking for a silver bullet out of this budget year, it doesn't exist.
I would ask, who's looking for the silver bullet?
Well.
Because it's not me.
I think you're saying that.
I don't think you're listening. I, I really, I don't think you're hearing me.
Or maybe I'm not hearing you.
What, what I'm suggesting. What, what I'm suggesting is you're talking about future potentials that you're hoping might happen. And we're gonna sit and wait on a whim and a prayer that we're gonna get a quarter cent sales tax increase that's gonna send a few hundred thousand dollars more our way. We're gonna wait a few more years until the bond is paid off and we're gonna be able to vote those dollars to roads. And yet, we're gonna continue the trend of continuing to increase every other department because that's what the people demand apparently, is what I'm hearing you say. When it seems to me it's been pretty clearly established by yourselves, by your own studies, that roads are really a high priority. And I, I'm looking at this budget and I'm saying, how does this council justify continued increases in every other department and not even scratching the surface of addressing the roads issue that you've spent almost an entire day on in the retreat? We spent another city council meeting on. And we're gonna do that in future years.
Blaine, that's a fairly strong disregard for the work that is going on currently to get us to the solution. Before, we, we are, we should have learned, at least in the last couple of years, that when you come forward with only part of the information that the public needs to make a decision like how to solve the road crisis, they're not going to be very supportive of it because there isn't enough research and detail in it. This is an extremely large problem. And working with the county and working with the state, we are working, we are getting this forms of money base. So to, to say that it's a whim, I think is maybe an overstatement.
Could be, could well be, and I'll, I'll grant you that. Personally, I don't think it's that likely. But even if it is, and let's say you get five hundred thousand.
We, we, you, everybody here, the whole city.
Okay, so say my taxes get increased.
For a road that you're driving.
For a road that I'm driving on.
That's correct.
Okay. It doesn't come close to our need.
And do you expect this need to be resolved in two thousand and sixteen?
Absolutely not.
Well, then what's wrong with coming up with a plan that addresses it in swallowable bites over a twenty year period?
Because if you never begin on the plan.
We have started.
Its, its likelihood of completion is questioned.
I think that you lack some information or you're choosing to ignore it.
You're entitled to your opinion.
No, I actually have facts that we have studied this and they have been presented in this room. I think you might be.
Your point is?
Stretching, you might be accusing the council of sitting on its laurels and not implementing some kind of a solution to solve roads. Research the magnitude of the problem, and I think that that is not the entire truth.
I think you've put words in my mouth. I think you have assumed much that appears defensive. And I'm simply raising and asking how, how we justify continued increases in spending in all other departments when you know the biggest dollar faced with now and probably in the future is this roads issue. And we're not, we're not really making any effort this year, which, you know, what, what leads us to believe we're gonna make much more significant efforts in the future if we continue this trend in the other departments. Where's the money gonna come from?
So let me say.
Where, I mean, we, we know from the study that's been done, all of the economic development we can possibly get is not gonna solve our budget problems.
That is correct.
Okay? We would love to have as much economic development as we can have, obviously. I think most people support that, but it's not gonna solve our problems. And so if we keep this ever increasing trend in all the other departments, I don't see a way we're going to ever be able to properly allocate funds to roads. And the trend shows we haven't even begun to keep up in the recent years.
Okay, I, I have a question. So in three years, it's gone, the road budget has gone from three hundred and fifty thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand. So I'm wondering, is that an increase?
That's an increase. But how much do we need?
Okay, I understand the need, but I, I have to also do the little dance of joy when it went from three hundred and fifty thousand to seven hundred.
It's been as.
Forty through fifty?
It's been as low as nine thousand dollars in a year.
Okay, so how the freaking will you get your progress? We're up to seven hundred and fifty thousand. Can we just do a dance of joy?
Yeah. That's good.
But can we look at the departments in relation?
Where do you want us to cut in?
Well, that, I think, is what we expect you to do. You're asking for public input on this budget. And I'm seeing a lot of defensive response here. You asked for public input and now you don't wanna hear it.
No, 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 no.
We're missing.
We have been listening.
Well, that's.
Well, Mayor, I'm, I'm speaking to you specifically because you, you have, you have questioned me here quite seriously.
Yes, I have, because the accusations you've made have been quite serious.
I, I think you're making some assumptions.
Now, if you want to talk about the road budget, think, Blaine, that you have to admit what the city is currently spending on roads is higher than what it has spent on roads before. And if you look at the study that this group of people has undertaken to solve the kind of problem that Mrs. Jolly is raising, it's a comprehensive plan. It's not a patchwork. It's a comprehensive plan and it does take time to put together. And it still needs to be presented to the people. This, this is big. It's not a five person decision all by themselves. So if you're trying to compare growth in other areas to keep up with inflation or other needs and thinking that that is going to somehow make up the four million, I, I'm not sure that that's the answer because we haven't finished all of the study. The roads study.
So until we get that finished and get a complete analysis on the three point six to four million dollars, we don't really know how big the problem is?
No, until we get an analysis on how much money we're asking citizens to come up with, just like we would ask for any other thing that the citizens want and they need to pay for, you can't just put it out there without facts.
So your proposal, am I interpreting this correct? Your proposal as a mayor and council is to address the rather significant need that you've identified in a couple of meetings using G A U B engineering to show us what it's gonna take to fix these roads. Your approach to fix this is to tell them to pay more taxes?
Is to identify where the revenues are going to come from and then go to the people with the remainder that's outside the scope of the revenue. Can still look at that have not yet been looked at, but it's not going to reduce the spending of seven hundred thousand dollars a year.
Have the tax load in Pleasant Grove currently compared to other cities?
No, I have not.
I have.
Okay, are we undertaxed?
No, actually, with all of the cluster cities that we have, we're probably within ten to fifteen dollars either side of cities in our cluster. That's for a quarter.
So, so we're not well below what the other cities are doing?
We're right on.
Okay, but your solution to a pretty significant roads problem is we're gonna have to raise taxes. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I will say this also with those clusters is that they, everyone, every single city is struggling in this point. And that, so.
I'm concerned with Pleasant Grove right now.
Okay, and I understand that, but this is a statewide, this is a statewide conversation. So we're, we're, we're one city of many who are trying to figure out how to pay the, the roads conversation. So we watched Provo do something, we're, we're watching how other cities are trying to fund their problems. Their, I think, Tuilla said some roads are gonna go to dirt, so we're just watching how other cities are doing that. So I, I believe that all cities are going to be implementing a transportation fee somehow or another.
Therefore, it's okay? Even though our fees will be out of line with every other city?
No, what I'm saying is that other cities will come up with a fee of transportation.
What, what's your solution or idea?
I think that's your job.
No, I'm asking you.
I think that's your job.
It is, it is one of my jobs.
You asked me this proposed budget and I'm raising some significant concerns. I'm not seeing in what has been presented in the retreat and what has been presented since as a reasonable approach within a new stream that we have to be able to tackle this roads problem.
So you've.
Now or in, in recent, future years? I, I don't see a viable solution because I, you have the ability to increase the taxes as high as you think you do.
I'm, I'm sorry, we don't think we can increase the taxes. What we can do is come up with an opportunity with the recommendation to the public and then the public has to decide if this is something that they are willing to support.
That's my point, is that I don't believe can afford or are willing to support the types of increases that you folks are.
But. We, we haven't proposed a major tax increase at this point. We're simply looking at all.
And you haven't proposed how to solve problems either. So therefore, we shouldn't raise a question about it? I, I failed to understand the logic here.
No, and we appreciate the reason. We're just trying to answer the question so false information may get out to the community about what we're trying to do. We're trying to solve the issue. We're working on it and we have not proposed a increase at this point.
Okay, then, then answer my question. I'll come back to my question again. You proposed, and how do you justify proposing an increase in every other department and not even beginning to address the roads issue that you have identified as very significant?
So how to increase their budget?
Let me just, let me do.
And it hasn't solved the problem.
Let me just give you this rationale. With the roads, our roads have not increased the length, the miles of roads that we have in the city over the last ten years. Except for subdivisions that have come in and they've put the roads in. So basically, our roads are the same that they've been in the last ten years. The other things that have increased, though, is our population. Our population has increased. We need more police officers. We need more recreational things. Well, some people don't think we need more recreational. But there is other needs throughout the city that warrant increases. The roads have not increased over the last ten years, but we have increased our budget for those same exact roads that we've had for the last ten years and we've increased them by hundreds of thousands of dollars.
But yet, you're asking for hundreds of thousands of dollars increase in multiple departments.
Anything yet. We're working a plan as the mayor has said. I bet we have discussed roads in every single meeting this year. And probably most of them last year. There's probably not a meeting that goes by that we'll discuss and are aware of what our road situation is. We discuss it. You're here most times. You hear it. You hear us working on a plan. You hear us.
And you're shocked because I don't see enough improvement in this budget.
I'm not shocked at anything you say, actually.
Doesn't surprise me.
The mayor lost his mind all the way.
If I, let me see if I can just restate.
Help me out, help me out here, Mayor.
You know, big huge deficit with the roads. And we have identified that our public has come to us and said, this is really a serious problem. We'd like to get this taken care of now rather than later, right? We want your attention on this now.
Yes, yes, they want your attention on it now. They don't expect it to be solved this year or in this budget or next year. Probably twenty years, though, they do expect something to happen.
Or, or even before that, also looking over here at the rest of the budgets that exist within the city. You're, you're lumping them together and saying, why don't we cut from this other area of the general fund?
No, that's not what I said, but.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm trying to find out, so help me know where from the rest of the general fund or another fund. You're suggesting that we hold back or cut back so that we can put significant dollars into the, the road side of this.
You're putting words in my mouth. What I, what I said.
I'm trying to understand.
What I said was, how are you justifying increasing all of these other departments and not beginning to scratch the surface of the roads issue?
Okay.
I, that in the, that in, that in the context, well, fine, it's certainly opinions, which is what you asked for.
Right. We're asking for your opinion, but if that's the extent, I, I don't know that there's something substantive here that we can discuss. You're expressing dissatisfaction that, that, that there's a proposal to increase other departments in the city in their spending for twenty sixteen. And there's not a significant increase in spending for the roads.
Here, here's the disconnect with that, Mayor. I've been at these meetings, okay? And the, the biggest, most important discussion that seems to have come out of these meetings in the roads and how, how far below the mark we are currently. We need to spend this money every year, not just one time shot. Any discussions to that level in any departments that would warrant a priority over beginning to address at some level those roads issues? But yet, we're proposing right here significant increases more than we're seeing in the roads area in every one of those departments. And you see what I'm saying? I, I don't see, I don't see where. I don't, there, you know, I realize we need a police and fire. I mean, that's obvious. We have need of a public safety building. We also want a new public works building. There's a whole lot of other needs that have been talked about, but nothing to the magnitude of the roads discussion. And so I'm confused as to how comfortable this council appears with this budget. And there any at why I'm raising this type of an opinion about, you know, because, because you're talking about a plan to fix roads. There's a major disconnect here for me.
Okay.
With, with the discussions that have been had.
Yes.
The priorities that have been indicated by those discussions and what we're seeing here, the allocation of funds. We're not gonna see appreciable increase in the revenue stream that we have to work with across the board. I don't believe have the ability to just. I don't believe we have the ability to just raise taxes to fund everything we wanna do. I think that's a reality that, that this really needs to think seriously about. There are real and serious constraints that the average citizen here in Pleasant Grove have to live with. They're not currently under taxed. And so, to deal with a relatively fixed revenue stream and prioritize this allocation, I'm seeing a major disconnect, and I have more heartburn now than about this budget than when I came into the meeting. And I had a fair amount of heartburn, I had a fair amount of heartburn when I came in.
Lane, I think that's.
Do you understand what I'm saying? Yes, that's why I think you have made some assumptions that may not be valid about accusations I'm trying to make or, or that kind of thing, that is not.
Okay, I, I know what you're saying.
Does that?
Yes, it does. You have heartburn because there's a priority here that does not appear to be being addressed in the budget that's being presented, and yet, we are, we propose in the budget with increases in other areas, not here, and there has not been, in your view, sufficient emphasis from the council in looking at the rest of these budgets and seeing if there isn't something we can do to address this deficit here.
Yes, and in light of the discussions we've had to date, the discussions about needs in the other departments paled in comparison to the needs in the roads department. And it seems to be getting short shrift here, uh, certainly in this budget.
Have I, have I understood what you're concerned about? Did I express back to you?
Yes.
I did?
Yes.
Okay. So, can we leave it at that? Because I don't think in this discussion, we're going to agree that tonight we're going to create any kind of funding from another department.
And, and I didn't expect that to be done in tonight's meeting, I just expected to get some response from the council about how they're looking at this, and, uh, there's a major disconnect in my mind about this right now.
Thank you. Okay. By the way, Lane and I are friends.
Can't you tell?
I just know his daughter and my daughter were best friends until the wedding night.
Steve Swayze, 1141 North, 300 East. You have a really tough job. You've talked about sacred cows tonight, and quite frankly, we have, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but 12 million, about 12 million is our revenue, right?
Yeah, roughly.
Five, five percent's what we're paying for public works. Four million, 12 million, we have to pay 25% to hit around $4 million. That's a five times increase in public work, so you following the math?
Not exactly.
It's math, but.
Well, let, let me tell you why I'm not following.
Okay.
The actual money that, that pays for the road construction is not coming out of the general fund.
Right.
The part that's in the general fund that identifies roads is paying for the people, and it pays for other services with roads, but not the actual roads.
So what are we paying to repair the roads, 750, where I'm at?
I think you just went over those numbers a little while ago. It's a total of 1.3 million coming from the state now, plus the road funds.
If it passes.
Just under a million dollars from the state, we've allocated 200,000 from the general fund. With the understanding that we have a bottom payment fluctuation in what we spend in a given year depending on what in our, the road money and the projects we need to have.
And all of that money, Steve, is in the.
It's about three times, maybe a little more than three times the amount, right? We have to increase, okay. So what I'm asking, and what I propose is, I feel like tonight, um, I'm, I feel like we had a lot of proposals on how to increase revenue. I feel like I didn't hear a lot of ways to significantly decrease expenses on the other side. And I am asking you, to your point, to cut in all areas. If this is truly your number one priority, have to happen. Sacred cows or not, whether I like these people over here or not, it's gotta happen, I feel like that's reality. And I, that, what I'm asking is, is part of, when you're talking about, to seriously look at cutting areas. There were several proposals by people here here to help, we're not here just to, you know, give you guys a bad time or anything like that, really, as well, invested in this, and we see this huge number. So I'm asking you to truly look at ways to, to cut, expand, wow. I, I don't have a lot of the great ideas, I mean, you talked about 350 some odd calls, fire related, it's a $2 million budget, that's $5,500 per call. I feel like that's a lot, I'm not an expert. It's a simple example, I bet in every budget, we could look at something, find a way to cut people, cut people, cut whatever it is. It's reality, it's in business, we do it every day, or we don't survive.
That is correct.
So, it, it's a very serious problem, I feel like, and I feel like us as citizens, our frustration, I can't speak, is that we don't hear a lot of conversation about cuts. We hear a lot of conversation about increased revenue, how can we come to the citizens and get more money from the citizens? Some of us wanna hear how cutting the budget significantly. And you're doing a great job, and city budgets are very tough, there's not a lot of revenue, that's the fact. This is reality, and you're gonna have to make some tough decisions, and I guarantee you, every decision you make, somebody will call you and be very upset. No matter what you make, and that's, that's what you signed up for, but that's reality. But you're the leaders, and so you're gonna have to cut through all of that and decide, you know what, this is what I feel, so I can make the decision and live with it, but we're gonna continue to complain, if I don't like something, I'm gonna call you or email you.
Or inform.
I would never want your job, no offense, but I couldn't take it, so.
You, you brought us some good points. I mean, it is valid that the council can and should look at cuts. Suppose that we go through this exercise, all right, and we do start looking at cuts. Can you help garner the support from people in Pleasant Grove to live with those cuts?
Yes, I already, at the retreat, I said this very thing, I said, "Make us your allies." What's the plan? Get the key people in the room, we're not here to make you have a miserable time. Get us in the room, listen, and don't be defensive to some of these people. I'm sorry, but they're just trying to give you advice, take it, if you don't like it, whatever, push it off, but I will. If we feel like, and I feel like a lot of us, truly taking our ideas, more than just listening, vetting them out, and also looking for ways to cut, I'll be your biggest ally, and I think a lot of other people will. But I feel like a lot of citizens do not feel like that is happening. I don't mean that rudely at all, I'm just trying to be straightforward and show us where we're at.
I say to you, Steve, and also to Lane, everybody that's spoken, we appreciate that level of support. I, from my perspective, I don't speak for everyone in this council, but I don't have any sacred cows, I think that's why the majority loves me, and there are some people who don't. But, uh, we, we absolutely need to be willing to look at every possibility and every option. And I agree with, and I agree with the folks that have spoken on that point. We need to be willing to analyze every possibility, and some of them are justified, and, uh, in ways that maybe you haven't seen, but we have.
We need to know that information.
But we need to do a better job of getting that.
If you, if it is justified, the citizens as a communication, which you talked about earlier, need to know why. I sat down with Anna Anderson once, she showed me a lot of things, opened up my mind, I told her I'd be a big ally if, if some things happened, so. I feel like the communication needs to start with our leaders, and give us a chance. Reach out to us, give us a legitimate plan that has cuts.
Thank you.
When, when you say communication, what, what does that entail? Like what, are we?
Communication's gotta be two ways.
Well, I understand, but what, what could we do better as, as city leaders to communicate? What would be the less effective way to build a resident?
I, I feel like, I feel like the city council is very defensive, right or wrong? And a lot of people feel that way.
Hey, you know, I feel that word, but word, is it because we don't agree at all?
No, it has nothing to do with agreeing or disagreeing.
I think it does, no. I think if we're not in our team, like, so, we're starting to be on this council, I'm not gonna say like that, we're called defensive. I think that's exactly what it is, and not pushing, uh, the city.
Sid, I just have to disagree with you, I have to disagree with you. Mayor's response to me was quite defensive, okay?
You just interrupted me, I'm trying to explain my thought, that was rude. I'm trying to explain, personally, as a council member, I have been called defensive by this group several times, just because I don't see, I, I'm open minded, I'm listening, but just because I don't agree with everything you say and all your ideas does not mean that I'm defense, I don't wanna hear you. So personally, I'm telling you how I felt as a council member.
I appreciate you telling me that.
It's not defensive, it's, it's, it's being involved in the council, knowing what I feel is going on personally, and relating that back to you. And you may not like that, and it may come across as defensive, but to be called that time after time, just because I'm not agreeing with every single thing you say, that's not right, that is not right, and yes, I will defend myself. Yes, I have that right as a citizen, as a council member, to defend my beliefs and what has happened here on my council, I will defend that, I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I apologize if it comes offensive, but you do reach a point where there's, there is the lack of communication. It's not defensiveness, it just needs to be an improved form of communication between the council and the residents. But to continue saying that, or, uh, well, I'm personally saying that to you, that's not right.
Would you, do you wanna hear what I have to say?
Sure, I would love that.
I feel like, I feel like, with the reason people feel they're defensive is not whether they agree or disagree. You can take it for what it's worth, they feel like they're not being listened to. Our number one issue was, roads was a, always been a major issue, and people don't feel like all the ideas are being vetted. So, I mean, that is what, that's how I feel about it, and I feel like that's how a lot of people feel about it, whether you agree or disagree, that's, since you asked, so.
Well, if I could make a proposal, I think one way we can communicate well with the public is getting answers to questions. I mean, Frank Nelson and Bill West brought up a number of suggestions, they asked questions about what percentage of the sales tax increases attributed to the patient-based algorithm, and what portion is attributed to our actual sales tax increase. They've asked about the salary increases that occurred at PSSD and at the Fox Hollow Golf Course. We can answer those specific questions, direct staff, the research and address those questions, get answers to the tough questions we're being asked, which I think is a great way to building trust, showing communication, showing, showing, because my fundamental core belief is that the public is in charge and they're smart, they get it, they, they get the analysis. One thing, and I'll compliment our, our police chief here, I did the numbers, I crunched a deep analysis because I was looking at the dispatch figures, and I wanted to see, could we do it cheaper by synergizing with a different organization? I didn't realize until tonight that Chief Smith had done that same analysis, he came to the same conclusion as I did. It's justified what we're doing, um, with our own dispatch service, but how many of the public have gotten that analysis from either of us? Have we done a good job of putting that information out, that it's questions that are really burning questions for the public? Are, are we looking at the sacred cows?
Right.
Are we looking at one of them, and if we're justifying them, then let's get that justification from the public. Again, that's what I advocated on my very first retreat, the very first, that I was in office and it didn't receive the reception I was hoping, but I see, yes, provide those justifications, do zero-based budgeting analysis, get it to the public, let the public know how hard we're looking. Because in defense of the great people up here and the great folks we have on staff, there is a lot of deep analysis that happens, and if it's not getting communicated, that's our.
Right.
And I think too, just tonight, I would bet every one of us wrote down the list of things that Frank talked about, that Bill talked about. I think we all did, we didn't, you know, sing Helen and whatever to make you feel.
I, I did you a little down.
You know, whatever, but all of those things sunk in, or at least we're gonna address them. I think the mayor's dotted them down, I dotted them down, we probably all jumped down, and those questions will be asked and see where we are. What I hope to happen is when we come back with answers that may be different than what you see as the answers, that you can embrace what we've done as far as research, and then moving forward with how we, how we view that information, and then we move forward. So, I mean, I commit that we're gonna look at all those that have been listed tonight.
Okay.
But I hope that you'll commit then to say, "Okay, we trust that you looked into them, and we now trust that you can vote on the budget and move forward."
Okay.
It takes a lot of courage to do what you're doing.
You're doing it, that's.
And it takes a lot of courage for everybody to do what they're doing. Most people aren't comfortable getting up and speaking to the public, thank you.
And Steve, I always do like it when you take the mic.
Thanks.
So I have a story. Um, I was, I did some yard work yesterday. I'm sorry. Okay, still on. I did some yard work yesterday, and a neighbor came down, she lives two houses up, sorry, this is a back, this is all a, inside joke. Um, I was in my front yard, and a neighbor two doors up came down, she said, "Diana, we have this beautiful herd of deer that cross in front of, you know, the two doors down, and then they, they jump over, and then they eat all of your tulips, and then they jump over and eat all of their, so..." She says, "I know they're crossing through to east, could we please put up a sign to help them cross the street?" So, I chuckled about that, and I thought, you know, there's probably 10, 11 herds now in town. Seriously, 20 minutes later, a neighbor, two doors up from her across the street came down, and he said, "Can we shoot the deer?" I got "save the deer" and "open season." So, that's, I just, I want everybody here in the room to understand that our, our lives are like that. We will take a call one minute, and then the next minute, somebody will have a completely different i- idea. The fund is listening to all the voices, and like Ben said, doing the research, and then I love our, um, so we don't chit chat, you know, offsite. We come to the table with different ideas, and we go until 11:00. Because we have, we, we feel very comfortable expressing our opinions with, with each other. And I love it when you guys do, do take the mic, because it shows one more voice. And hopefully, Lane, I am not defensive. To listen, I, I believe that everybody in, I believe everybody here really does wanna listen.
Thank you. Um, silver bullet, okay? Look at, he's ready to write, just, just like Cindy said.
Are we going fast change? Cause that's what I went with both of us.
We're, no. So, we talked about 3.6 million to improve the roads over a 20-year period of time, what is the maintenance cost to just maintain what we've got so it doesn't get worse?
3.6 million.
So, 3.6, no, you can't improve and maintain.
Yeah.
3.6 to 4 million dollars is what J U B study came back with.
But that improves them eventually.
It improves them over 20 or 30.
Right, but to just maintain them, it's less than that.
And improves them.
A smaller 30-year watch, just maintenance.
It's more than what we, it's more than what we're putting in, 'cause we're losing ground, right? So, so, so it's some number there, I, I.
I can't say I want a road that's 10 years old and go and pave that.
Correct.
Paying, you get brand new pavement.
Correct, but you, but you have some roads out there that are shape, and, uh, and you wanna maintain them, not let them get bad. You don't want them to alligator, right? Yeah.
Doing the right thing at the right time.
Yeah.
No matter what you do, you end up with, you saw it on the ground.
So you need a silver bullet to, to get the improvements going, because now we're probably just maintaining.
Right, we're falling behind.
That's what I would assume too, but some of this extra money you're doing, and you said out there, not this budget, but out in a couple of years, you're hoping these other things come in, that's what we all do, we all hope, like, two years from now, too. So, from a silver bullet, just ideas, you guys know what the books are better than me. We need some upfront money to get things started this, this year here. So what if you were to go on the, uh, the loan, the $700,000 a year bond that we have, and you go to them and say, "What if we just pay interest one year and extend that bond one year?" That could infuse some money there, because you think, or we're hoping, praying, that we're gonna get this other money in. So one thought for a silver bullet would be, could we float the bond out here by only paying interest this year on it? Might be a couple thousand, 100,000 possibly, Dean might know that better than the rest of us. I'm not gonna put you on the spot, it's something, it's less than, 'cause 700,000 pays it off. Then the other thing is, um, again, Sid said, think out of the box, she got me thinking there, in her defensive way. She got me thinking there in her defensive way. No, I'm just kidding. And see, you always need enthusiasts to defuse and on any. But the other thing, we have a lot of property and assets here. How many of those could that that? Yeah, we'd like to hold them and develop on them eventually, but maybe we can't. Maybe we're going to have to buy something later. How many assets we have that we can make liquid and and sell them off and possibly get enough infusion to to get a jump going here in the next year? For this other stuff to come in. That's my thinking out of the box. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Frank.
Let me just throw out a couple more possibility for some funding. First of all, Councilman Boyd made the statement that, you know, we've got the same amount of roads we have. You know, we've got people moving with subdivision. That is exactly right. And the formula, unless they've changed it, the formula for class C road funds is calculated on road mileage. And it used to have population included in it or square mileage. I don't know if they're both still there, but that to me opens a little bit of a crack in the fact that the roads that these were traveling on to get to their homes in the subdivisions are older roads that we had in town and are becoming. They were designed to handle that much traffic every day, particularly construction traffic and that that takes place on it. So does that open the door a little bit for us to use impact fee money or to even review our street impact fee? And include part of this cost for improving these roads to uh add it into the into the impact fee of somebody, those that are coming in. It's okay for with the development that are in and has Bill left yet?
I think Frank, I think it's already in there.
Okay, that that's something that I think we that if it's not there, that is legitimate to to take a look at. The thing would be um we look or I don't know if it's but in the budget as I was looking at it, there's some capital projects money. Water, sewer, storm drain and secondary system. There's some capital projects money. Now, a lot of times the damage that comes from the roads is because of the road cuts that are made for sewer, water, storm drain and secondary. Is it possible that you could take a portion of that capital projects fee? And I realize it may push back, you know, replacing a line or or TVing a sewer. But would it be possible to take even if it was even if you said, and I'll throw a figure out and Dean heart attack, but dollars a year out of each one of those capital projects accounts? And say, okay, there's another hundred thousand dollars that we could pick up, not asking you to. Well, when we ask to cut, it is cutting because you're going to have to miss out on some part of a capital project. But it would seem to me that it's a logical way to try and and talk about the problem that that is paramount in the city right now. And see if we can't get closer every little bit gets us a little bit closer to that to that point that we've got to be to.
Good suggestions.
I just have a quick comment. Diane Moss, three ninety one east, two hundred south. I just want to make a comment on my view of the most wonderful budget keeper. And he has really helped us cut. And you think it's painful, but it really isn't in the long because you cut and later on down the road you gain because you're out of debt. Okay, your house is nice. Things are safe. Things are how they have to be. It's actually a joy when you look at it that way because you've got a lot to look forward to. I look forward to having the roads nice in the city and the sidewalks nice and the pride, having good people move in. You know, having some kind of a program to help develop homes that are trashed and in bad shape. I I look forward to that. And if we can cut and gain those things in the future, it's a good thing. It's a joy thing. It's not a bad thing. And I just that's just my opinion on that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, others?
Jennifer Baptista, thirty two north, thirteen hundred east. After listening to everybody, the thing that's coming, you know, loud and clear to me is nobody knows the timeframe. So because because you had it in front of you, a lot of people expected something on roads in this budget. And since there's not enough abundance or a specific address to the roads, when is that process going to happen? Where they will see funds being put in a budget so that they know that it's being addressed? And I think that's really where the confusion and where the frustration is, is because this is our next year's budget and they're not seeing the road money in this budget. And so that I think that was, you know, what I heard mostly is, you know, if we can, if some idea, because we're now another year out. And even the gas tax and if we get the quarter cent sales tax, that revenue is not going to hit us until twenty seventeen. So until twenty seventeen and the bond gets paid off in twenty eighteen, what is our plan? Or what is the timeframe that actually starts seeing additional money put towards roads? So I think that's kind of would help, you know, settle some of the people down. The other thing I have is I have checked into hollow budget over years. Last year it did a negative twenty thousand dollars. We still we didn't budget extra money. So our budget's always been two hundred forty thousand to Fox Hollow. So how does that twenty thousand deficit for the year have be handled? And why did did somebody else cover that? Did we get charged that? We just didn't show it in the budget. I'm just curious because it's a negative review ahead of twenty thousand dollar negative on top of all the money that was collected between cities.
Good point. Okay, anyone else?
I'm just making sure they're all done because the mom in me is bringing you all cookies next week and something non chocolate for you because I know how that works for you. Okay, I just have some questions. Um, Bez, brace yourself, Dan. I'm still laughing at you gardening because it cracks me up. Um, I've heard a lot saying, cut now and we'll gain in the future. Cut now so you see the potential. As a mom, a lot of times I I have my hindsight is twenty twenty all the time. I should have spent more time reading with Hayden. I should have spent more time throwing the football with Zach maybe or something. And I think maybe, and I hope you guys can do this, and I hope you take the suggestions offered tonight. But I think we're seeing the hindsight twenty twenty with our city administrator and a former councilman. And I'm wondering why we didn't make those cuts then because now we would be reaping those rewards. And I think maybe, I I don't know. I didn't walk in their shoes, so I don't know. And then why in two thousand seven, why didn't why was the bond even passed? What was the consideration there? Because that's kind of where we're stuck now, why we can't get out. So why?
Are you talking about the road bond?
No, the bond, I'm sorry, for Fox Hollow. Thought you were reading my mind.
Let's see.
So Fox Hollow in two thousand seven is when the bond was passed that we're going to be finished paying off two thousand twenty eight, correct?
I believe that's for that new clubhouse.
Okay, so why didn't we pull out then when we had a chance?
Water irrigation.
The irrigation system.
Yeah, irrigation and clubhouse.
Because that kind of locked us in then, so.
We were kind of locked in before that, or at least we thought we were. And so we thought that by investing more in the in the golf course, we could help it to become self sustaining.
Yeah. Okay, I golf, so I'm all right. My grandfather or my father in law golfs there every morning and it saves him. So when was the last time our taxes were raised? I remember asking this at city retreat, but I don't remember an answer. Has it been five years? Our property taxes?
Yeah. I can't answer that. So we know that we had two general obligation bonds, one for the rec center, one for the swimming pool.
And when does this?
That was over approved. Swimming pool was nineteen ninety four.
Okay.
That was all paid out. Rec Center was.
Two thousand eight.
Other taxes. So both those were over approved property taxes. The city council has not just imposed a property tax increase and we could we researched it back twenty five years and couldn't find it.
Really? So that's quite a lot, quite a quite a long time.
Yeah, like Dean said, most of our property tax growth has just been because of new growth, new construction.
I know my property taxes gone up every year because that's what it does as we get equity.
The city portions actually reduce.
So so I. So but the city hasn't passed a property tax increase in over twenty five years.
The two of them.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Thanks.
There is one other that we have to, I I would ask the council to consider also on this funding. Is that each year, just because of natural growth, there is an increase in the class C road funds? The I mean, you've got a thousand dollar increase over last year, seems small.
There's just gone up and there's just gone down too.
As I looked at your revenues here on your budget show, I thought it shows it was up.
I did close that share, but there's been years when it's lower than the years before.
Because any increase, I would hope that as a council that you'd be committed enough that any increase that came into the class C road fund would be designated for road maintenance and not for for equipment rental or for the other things that class C road funds could be spent for.
That's fair.
And the other the other issue is that the gentleman brought up, and I I really think he hit it on the head. And as you commented back, was the communication that we, you know, that we've got to have. And somebody's got to say it, and I will, because it was very offensive. I took it personally, very offensive, when the city was going to approve a tax increase without giving me, as a citizen, the opportunity on it. And so there's a, you know, there's been a little bit of a drawback and it's not from this half or this half. It's from everyone about, hey, are they going to are they going to let me have some say what's going on? And I think that communication is very important because if if they think that we're if if we think we're being treated fair, it's going to work. If we don't, then you're you're going to have your backs against the wall.
Okay, thank you, Frank. A loss of support or trust when the council passed a MBA bond.
You got it?
Passed.
It was passed.
Passed. I think it was voted on and then there was a truth in taxation.
No.
Whatever. Both, excuse me, an MBA bond without the voted people. Most people pulled back.
And and actually, that process, I respect the assumption. We proposed an idea, we heard from the people and we changed what we heard. To me, that's exactly how the process should work. And they came, they spoke and and we changed the process because we heard back at the time that we proposed the the MBA bond with moving forward that we had about twenty people come to the open house. We didn't get a lot of feedback. So we moved forward the process based on the feedback from the majority that we did receive at that time. Later on, we heard from a couple of months later, we heard from the majority of the public that came out at night and they were against it. And that's why the the citizen or the that's why the council changed and and changed the type of bond we were going after. So to me, that's how the process of the city government should work, hearing from the people and and making decisions based on on their feedback.
I think I'm seeing a little more clearly what Blaine was trying to get at when he said I was defensive. I think I'm I'm understanding what he's saying. Let me try to express this. As a mayor, one of my responsibilities is to listen to what the public is saying and seeking to understand what the public is saying, but not necessarily always having an answer or a retort or a justification for something that may be presented that I don't agree with or that I I think is untrue. But it's to listen and to hear. The other thing I'm hearing is, and I I hope you guys will as public give give me this feedback. If we in this meeting, these meetings that we have on budgets, were actually discussing budget cuts and going through specifics, like some of the specifics that have been presented. And the public could see and hear the discussion that was on behind that. And then those discussions and decisions came back and were reflected in the summary, which turns out to be a proposed budget. Then then there would be more of an understanding about how we've arrived or 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 to see that the effort is being extended. Even if it's factory as a result. I think maybe that's something I could I could do better as a mayor, listening and entertaining the discussion in public. And then and then helping to have those kinds of things where in policy statements like our budget for the upcoming year. You guys are welcome to comment on it because I think I'm listening right now, I hope. Okay, anyone else chiming in on the budget?
Roger Green, six sixty five east, two hundred south. Hey, what I out to me on this particular graphic that's on the on the screen is swimming pool has a hundred and five thousand dollar budget there and the rec center is considered more than that. Is the swimming pool, is that just for the swimming poolers or other recreational things added into that, Dean?
Swimming pool is just a swimming pool. The rec center includes programs as well.
Okay, I would hate to be the one to say, close the swimming pool down. Be just to save that hundred and seventy thousand dollars and put it to use somewhere else. Because the unintended consequences of doing that is going to put those kids somewhere else. Most likely doing something that is going to take law enforcement to to take care of or the fire department to take care of. The same would go with any recreation programs that are cut. Those kids are going to get involved doing something. And if they're not doing recreation, you wouldn't have kids that were here earlier. That everybody that was give a standing ovation to that young lady and to all them other kids that was in the recreation programs. So good to cut when we can and where we can, but there are things that we just can't cut because of the unintended consequences. And I would, like I say, I would hate to see any of those come from things that we really haven't set back on that.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah, Frank.
I'm going to get it one more time. I want to give, I think we need to give some kudos to this group right over here because we've heard a lot about cuts tonight. I will guarantee you, after being in the position, that the budget that we that we've been looking at tonight looked a whole lot different about December, January, February, when these guys turned it into the the hatchet man. Cuts, I think we have to realize that cuts were made. We don't know what which and we we lift it up to the staff to work with the administrative part of it to come up with the right cuts. I think that's good. Now, it may not be the cuts we wanted and there may be a little bit more that can that could come off of it. But I I don't want anybody, at least I don't want anybody leaving this room tonight thinking that this budget did not have cuts put into it because it was put in before we looked at it tonight.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, anyone else? Looking at this, is there an action on this tonight? Let's go ahead and close the public hearing on on the public's budget. Any discussion up here is council.
Well, Frank, Wayne, Mr. West, Bill.
Mr. West, Bill, and Steve, I can slip you back down. I, I took over about twenty-four questions. And so, we, we are listening, and we have to go and do now. We have to listen to us, and we ask. Roger had some good points, and so we, we listen to you and, and get it done.
Okay, any other?
I'd like to say that I, you know, I've appreciated very much, this has been a really good, really healthy discussion, I think. From my perspective, this is the kind of conversation that we should have. Frank's point is exactly right. There were cuts that have been made. I've seen some of them requests that were reduced to math from what we have actually implemented into this budget. I would like to ask that we authorize staff to answer the specific questions. We all took notes, but there were specific questions that were raised, and I'd love to see answered.
So I got some of them, but I might have missed some, so if you take notes and you can email me all those, we'll research it.
Thanks, Rob. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Others?
Let's close that item. I gotta move on. Sorry?
Might go to the other?
Yeah, if I did one more one.
And you're not even defensive?
You lived on my roof. Not dirt, gravel. They have done three, done thirty years, because I remember the marriage.
Well, we can do full rebuilds. It's, it's about a million dollars a mile.
Well, I think, I guess. Well, there are vacant lots on this road. This is the vacant lot, it's gonna be that down again.
Yeah, that's, that's a water transformation for the reason in public. Build the road and try to do it. And take about half of the forms everywhere and crush that into the road and work on it. We always do a good job with can rebuild and patch map.
I'd like to, I'll call the few, yeah, wedding, and then something else.
There's some waiting noise going down second sound.
That's the only good sound. Even though we've got all these promises still.
These remind you, we could be living in Baltimore. We could be living in Detroit. Trying to battle by the problems.
We chose to live here.
I can remember the day when I was
a little bit in
to go back and on. At that point, we were going over to the public safety person in December and taking out a tax anticipation to carry it through for the next three million.
We need to get doing those.
She's crazy too. Oh God, baby. She's home, we're home.
If there hadn't been a surprise, they would, they'd come through, they'd give you they would ask. I says, "How are you?" He says, "Well, I'm good." I says, "We have, don't, we don't get saved."
The air is hot.
Yeah, the air is ill. I know, they, it's really cold.
Yeah, freezing.
Okay, we'd like to welcome everybody back to the meeting. Does anyone need anywhere water?
It's just the heat.
Chocolate, where's the chocolate? All right, item nine A is to consider for adoption resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero one six. Uh, well, yeah. Optimizing the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with Bowen, Collins and Associates for the purpose of providing structural and life-saving evaluations on four buildings owned by Pleasant Grove City and providing for an effective Yeah, what you have in front of you is just the result of us choosing to retain their services. Within the agreement talks about the fee that we're to pay and the schedule. And there's other provisions in here that are more just kind of legalese as far as that's concerned, but I, I think the two main things that we're concerned about is the fee, which was set in our proposal at twenty twenty-seven thousand five hundred. And then the schedule was really, initially, they gave us a schedule to start on in early May. But we just have asked them at this point, we want to stick to the six-week schedule, but we'll give you the trigger date because we don't know exactly when that is. We, I think at this point, this is my understanding of staff, is that we'll have our new public safety committee created, and then that group would be part of the kickoff meeting when we start with Bowen and Collins. And so, if you look at task number one, is they have a kickoff meeting set. And so, whenever we say that is, that's when the six-week time period triggers. Is there any questions?
Discussion? I'd like to have a sense of when that trigger date, when we anticipate as a council, whether we would trigger that trigger date. I mean, how soon are we expecting to get our commis?
I have interviewed today Kathy, do you know her number? A bunch of people, I've seen them coming in and out of City Hall. Thirty-four. We've got several more scheduled for Thursday. Eight, seven, so far for Thursday. And I'll also be interviewing on Friday, if people are available to interview on Friday. And then we'll interview again next Tuesday, so we can get, get the schedule to interview. Once that's done, then we'll bring forward the, the nine names for the core committee. Thinking we would also bring forth alternates so that the council can look at them. That way, if somebody's unable to complete the task or going to be absent once or more, someone who's prepared can then we don't lose time. So I would hope by two council meetings from now. So June ninth would be the target date. Pardon? June ninth would be our council meeting two weeks from today. Just a reminder, June sixteenth is strawberry days, and we are not scheduled to have a meeting today. Any other questions on this agreement? Yeah, I, I would hope to actually have circulated the recommendations to you by email so that you have a chance to review the list and then also include it as part of the
And then between the sitting of the city of the council of triggering of this contract, we want, I guess, we give ourselves the trigger date ability because we want the seated committee to go off as well.
That's my understanding. I mean, we don't have to do it that way, but my understanding is this committee would be part of giving them direction on some of the things that they're gonna look at.
We want this committee to have a meeting or two of their own before they meet with Bowen and Collins. I'm just trying to get a a sense of what our real timeframe is to start the six to eight week window to get this worked out.
When, when we discussed this last week, two weeks ago, I, I walked away with a slightly different impression. I thought that we were gonna execute the contract and the engineers were gonna go and start doing their work. And we would organize the committee independent of that work. And then, and while that was going on, we would bring the committee together. There are, obviously, since we're bringing strong personalities and opinions to the table, there, there is some work to do in the beginning of establishing the ground rules, the meeting times, how the committee's going to function, when. By the time that, and I'd like to go through the exercise that Scott walked us through at one of the offsites that we have of, of forming a group and understanding where people are coming from, how the personality thing. And, and then after, after that's achieved, we should probably have the results getting close from the, from the engineers. The reason I walked away with that impression is if, if one of these, if the engineering firm comes back and says that we have a very serious threatening problem on our hands, the council is going to have to take the action independent of the, of the public safety building committee. Because I represent media like threatening if they don't, then we're okay to go ahead with the plan that's been laid out.
My, my fear is also is if a committee has different criteria that they want to have studied, that alters the price. And so, I think.
Or you're just what they do. They cut some things they were thinking of doing to do what the committee says to do, which we may not want.
Yeah, so that's what I walked away with last time we discussed this, that the council wanted the, the engineering firm to proceed forward immediately.
I'm certainly comfortable with that. And I, I don't know if we incorporate into this motion, but if we set the trigger date for, you know, this week or whatever, or at the time of execution of this agreement, start moving.
Yeah, just, as, as I'm listening here, and this is just, you know, thoughts going on in my mind, and I think Diana was kind of alluding to this. If the city council says, "We're gonna, we're gonna get this study started," because the kickoff meeting is really where you're gonna say, "This is, this is exactly what we want." And so, if we get weeks down the road, and this other committee starts getting involved in this, they could have different criteria, things they want to look at, which either would extend the contract and the cost or, or would just take a longer time to look at. So, either, I guess in my mind, either the ki, city council says "We're gonna be the committee that's gonna oversee this. The kickoff meeting is with us, and through the six weeks, they're gonna be dealing with us and what we want," then that's the way we, we proceed. And then the new committee, the take the results and use that information. So that, that will keep the process moving. If you feel like you want input from the public safety committee, I would suggest that we hold off until they're up and running, we trigger these guys. Because when I talked to him, I said, "I don't, I don't know when we're starting." But I said, "It could be six weeks from now, it could be next week," and they were okay with either one. So, related to your discretion, city council, and kind of how you want to do. But if you, if you wanna, I can set up the kickoff meeting, and we can do it probably sometime next week. And if we want to do it in the evening, I don't know if we want to make it part of our city council meeting. We fight for some reason. But I, we can start working on the
Meeting is completely different than when engineers.
You know, and if the council's available in an afternoon too, if, if sometimes that's possible, I know that some of you are working, and that's a little bit more of a difficult situation, but just a suggestion, we could do it on a four o'clock. just a suggestion, we could do it on a four o'clock, have a place day or something.
I think that's right, because last time we discussed, I made the suggestion that we wait. It was quite clear that we not wait, then I. So with that, entertain a motion in this resolution.
I got one of the random questions. This is totally. To Bowen's instruction.
I don't know the answer to that.
But I'm aware.
Okay. Okay, I was just curious if there was a relationship.
I don't think it is.
Mayor, I make a motion for adoption of resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero one six, authorizing the mayor to sign a professional service agreement with Bowen, Collins and Associates for the purpose of providing structural and life safety evaluation on four buildings owned by Pleasant Grove City and providing for.
Well, no, so you guys adopt the agreement and then I'll come with them on when we want to meet with them.
And I'll second that.
Okay, you have a motion by Eric, a second by Diana, by voice, Ben, Sid.
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
So all you know, there's some potential dates for next week to have kickoff.
Thank you. Okay, item nine B is to consider approval of Creekside at Aspen Grove Platte C, vacating a portion of Creekside at Aspen located approximately four forty west, thirty-three hundred north.
Okay, Mayor and Council, this item has been long in the making, not just that we've been waiting all evening to get to it, but this has been going on for a few years. We have been working with the Creekside at Aspen Grove Development in readjusting the, their boundaries on their platte. They had some real challenges with property line issues, and they decided they also wanted to add into yet another lot. So this is located, we've got the Manila Creek Pond right up here, just right off of thirty-three hundred north. And so in between the pond and Canyon Road is this development known as Creekside at Aspen Grove. Fully developed, but this is just adjusting property lines. So you have a new parcel that is being added into this development on the north end there. So other than that, finally resolving the property line issues and then adding this new property in to that on the north side, there are no big issues. We have had this reviewed by the planning commission, they recommended, well, they approved the preliminary platte. So staff recommends that you approve the final platte.
It is the discussion.
Are the property owners all in favor of this?
Yes, we received a letter from owners association stating that they were okay with the addition of the, the new property and the platte as proposed.
Any other questions? Okay, now entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll move that we approve Creekside at Aspen Grove Platte C, vacating a portion of Creekside at Aspen Grove Platte A located approximately four forty west, three thirty, three hundred north, and that rural residential zone, Manila neighborhood, adopted in staff report, the financing conditions and exhibits.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ben, second by Diana, all in favor?
Aye.
Any close? Okay, motion carries. All right, item nine C is to consider two lots of division called Cassie Estates Platte A, located at approximately seven hundred north, three hundred east in the R one eight zone.
This is a simple two lot subdivision. We have just right off of three hundred east and the road that accesses the junior high school right here, it's in the R one eight zone, large lot, approximately one acre in size, that's been used as a pasture, pasture and not a past door. And so it's just divided into two lots, both running on three hundred east. No issues with that. Preliminary platte was approved by planning commission.
Questions?
We sat, did see the pasture go.
Any other comments?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we approve with two lots subdivision podcasts these days, Platte A located approximately seven hundred north, three hundred east in R one eight, simple family residential zone in Monkey Town.
Second up.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben, yeah, Diana.
Good job, Ben.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any close? All right, item nine D is to consider for adoption and ordinance two thousand fifteen dash nineteen, amending title one after seven of Pleasant Grove Municipal Code to comply with recent changes in the election in Utah and providing for an effective date.
Mayor and Council, this order amendment is being proposed, and it does two things. The easy is we've moved a section, and it's basically a housekeeping item, and reviewing, we discovered that we had qualifications and time for filing for elective office and filing fees in the campaign financial disclosure section, so we've just moved and brought it out to its own section where it's more appropriate. Then the other changes have been basically mandated by a change in the state law. So in the campaign financial disclosure section, proposing to add definitions as they are defined in the state code. And the, probably the critical change for everyone to be aware of is that candidates can no longer accept anonymous donations. And if they're over the fifty dollar reporting limit, those camps or cautions have to be disclosed. And if you have somebody who gives you something over fifty dollars and they have put it in a white envelope with no name on it, then you will be required to turn that city to put in our general fund or some other five oh one C three corporation. So cats will no longer be able to have significant undeclared anonymous campaign contributions.
It's not a problem, but candidates often have huge amounts of anonymous money. I wish we did.
Well, someone at the state legislature thought it was a problem, I guess.
State level.
Did that come out of my mouth?
I'm just trying to remind the council they're being recorded.
And then the other thing too, and I don't know that we would find it needful for us to do this, but the state statute also allows us to adopt strict campaign finance disclosure ordinance we so choose. So if we think that the state is not being strict enough, then we can, we can adopt ones of our own, but currently that's not being proposed. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, Tina, it's, it's probably just a housekeeping item. Very first page, the copy I have, it's one, one dash seven dash one condo, condo municipal collections. And then immediate to that in red, it's one dash seven dash two qualifications, time of filing for elected offices and filing fees. And then after that, it goes back to one dash seven dash one.
Oh, so I think what the point was, and I'm not, I'll double check this clerically, but I think the idea was is that you know, at the beginning of our sections, we say what it, what's coming. I think maybe that was the idea is that, that was just an idea of telling you, like a chap, like a
Index?
An index or a chapter title, but I'll double check and make sure clerically what was going on there.
Thank you. Any questions? Discussion? Complaints? Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make the motion. And we adopt ordinance twenty dash, twenty fifteen dash nineteen, amending Padawan Chapter Seven Pleasant Grove Municipal Code to comply with recent changes in the election laws in Utah for providing for an effective date.
We have a motion by Ben and a second by Diana.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben's? Thank you. Right, item nine E is to consider for adoption a resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero seven, authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal cooperative agreement between Utah County and Pleasant Grove City for the administration of the two thousand fifteen municipal elections.
So this is formalizing, and that was made by the council, I believe during our retreat, where you decided that we would contract with the county to manage the upcoming municipal elections in the fall. So this just finalizes the responsibilities between the two parties and sets the amounts that will be charged to the city. So basically, it, it tells you what they're going to provide and what we still need to provide as a city in order to run the election effectively and then sets the prices for their participation. Basically renting their electronic voting machines, and they provide certain personnel, and we provide others. It's pretty simple and straightforward.
Looks like boilerplate they're using.
Yes. This is just their boilerplate that they use anytime a municipality wants to utilize their services for election years.
They have a number seven page, Utah County up to seven, so is that just, we need their more programming experience or to change the plate?
Sorry.
I just, it was open ended, so I was curious.
I believe it's set forth in a, in this list, but I'm sorry, I'm not on the same page, just number seven of the.
Number four.
Okay, got it. So what that is, is it can exceed the seven thousand two hundred, so if by chance they get, they come in less, that's okay. But we've set a cap on it, it can't be more than that. Okay?
Other questions or discussions?
So I talked about this back in January, February at our offsite meetings, I believe the discussion was that this was actually a cost justified, it saves us money over operating on our own as a city versus deploying the county.
That's my understanding, is that? Is that your understanding, Kathy?
Kathy presented back at the retreat.
That it saves us money to have them do it rather than us? Or it's a wash?
It's pretty much a wash. It basically saves me a lot of time.
Yeah.
So saves money in regards to Kathy's.
Right. Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll let somebody else make your motion.
I make a motion about resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero seventeen, authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal cooperative agreement between Utah County and Pleasant Grove City for the administration of the two thousand fifteen municipal elections.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Eric and a second by Diana. Ben?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just as a note on that one, I will say our county election officials are very accessible. I've done a lot of direct conversations with the county clerk.
They'll take time and I'll, I'll attempt to question you.
Okay, item nine F, consider for adoption a resolution two thousand fifteen zero one eight, accepting the municipal wastewater planning program self-assessment report for two thousand fourteen calendar year and providing for an effective date. Correct?
We don't need to walk there.
Great.
This, this is the same that we do every year, it's a self-evaluation, helps with our insurance rating and different things. It's just the state kind of keeping an eye on us, know our, our population growth, and if we've had any sewer, sewer backups, you know, that would cost a lot insurance wise to repair, so. We do it every year.
Questions?
I see you scored a lot.
Any other discussion?
We appreciate the effort it goes for that every year, it's worst part, trying to keep up with it and do it when it's supposed to be turned in, so.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to the resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero one eight, accepting the municipal wastewater planning program self-assessment report for the two thousand fourteen calendar year and providing for an effective date.
We need an effective date.
It's just for the resolution. The resolution, it'll say like effective now, or it'll say effective on posting.
And I'll second that.
A motion by Eric and a second by Diana. Ben?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Diana? Carries. Okay. Item nine G is to consider awarding Bowen Colin, excuse me. To consider awarding Bowen construction the pipe plant railroad track demolition project located at approximately four hundred west, eight hundred north.
So it's the first step in our process of clearing the pipe plant property, and it's just to remove the track on the pipe plant property in the spur down to the main line. We build this out, contacted some demo, railroad demolition firms where some of this product could probably be reused. We actually didn't get a bid from that firm. As they looked at it, they decided the amount of track was too small to really warrant the effort for them. So the three that did bid were salvage companies recommending that Bowen Construction be awarded the demolition price, their base bid was sixty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents.
Who takes us to the track that's not, you know, it's just going to be between the property and where it connects to the, I mean, is this the only track there?
This, this includes the track that we were able to identify on the property. So this is from UTA's main line on the curve.
Right.
Across Center Street, up, up to four hundred north, and then on to the private identified track on there. So total amount of track is or is about forty-five hundred lineal feet that's installed on the ground. There was another four hundred and seventy feet that was just kind of stacked up to the side, so.
It's a lot.
It is.
We're going to help when they kick it out across Center Street without passing that.
We thought it would be a really good way to slow down traffic, so. They'll, they'll patch it back.
People are used to it.
So the crossing itself will be.
The crossing itself will be removed, so they'll only have one place for the buses to stop on Center Street.
Does that particular one also have, what do you call it, the signals or warning signs?
There are only crossbucks that access there, so. No flashers.
Probably come out of the.
Those will be.
Can you start?
Probably. I suspect they've been there for years, so.
Okay, discussion?
This is my notification, is that price include, that's after any salvage value?
And so that, we asked them to bid in any salvage value. So for example, the, the four hundred and seventy feet of loose rail, they're getting rid of it at a dollar twenty-five. So a four hundred and seventy feet of rail going away for five hundred and eighty-seven dollars, it would be that there's some salvage value that's being included in that price. Hardly bring the truck down for that money.
Other questions?
When does it start?
Notice to proceed for the mayor to sign, and we get going right away. We did tell them they are not allowed to work off property during the week of strawberry days, so they will not be touching, they'll either be done with the crossings, or they will not do the crossings until after.
I remember hearing the conversation that has that property on Seventh South and the railroad crossing, they were looking for, so you might want to just let them know.
To bow into them, we'll, we'll probably point them to the railroad contract, they may actually get a better deal than just taking it down, having somebody cut it up, so. We tried to, to put it together in such a way that we could maximize what value was there to decrease the cost to the city, so. So that's, as it was noted, that's why there was no engineer's estimate, because we didn't really know whether or not come as a negative price or a positive price like we got.
Is that going through the property of the senior living center?
It's actually not, that property that it sits on is city property. The, the senior project is including as part of their site improvements, the construction of a paved trail and landscaping.
Where that.
Where that sits, so. Project will finish it, so we'll have a nice trail from fourth to Center Street when we're done.
Excellent.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I say before the right. I will make the motion to consider awarding Bowen construction to the pipe plant railroad track demolition project located at approximately four hundred west and eight hundred north.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Cindy, a second by Diana.
Yay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any close? Motion carries. I don't see anything under eleven. Let's go to our June second meeting.
It's okay, I'll send the council an email.
So we'll skip this one?
Skip that.
Oh, thank you. Neighborhood and Scott business, let me come first, Levi?
I'm just wondering why you didn't include Cindy in on the color coordination.
Oh.
Oh.
I didn't get some.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. Do you want to respond?
Left out already.
Clearly don't look at ourselves from your direction. I don't.
Okay. Over here, Ken? Nothing tonight, okay? David? Dion? I'm blind today, guys, I don't have my glasses, so I'm struggling, correct? Okay, Dave? Mike?
Yeah, I had a letter I wanted to read, but I'm going to forego that. And I'm going to do something that you see very often.
Okay.
I'm going to give kudos to the fireman. Last week, I get this phone call that I can't understand personally the other side of the line. I know it's my wife, but I can't understand it. She's very emotional, very upset. And somebody was hurt, so I'm getting worried because I can't get out of her what's going on. So I, I get into it a little bit and I hear the word dog.
What?
Dog.
Dog.
So I'm like, okay, so the dog is hurt. Yes, the dog is hurt, the dog's not breathing, so she has this little like eight month old pulpit that was out in the yard. And I don't know what happened to it, she really doesn't, we, we think maybe it got bit by some sort of spider. But it's, it's playing around and then it vomited and just fell over. And stopped, stopped breathing. So she's beside herself and this little dog's not breathing. It's, it's after hours, there's not that she can take it to, doesn't know what to do. So she says, can I take it to the fire department? So that's her, that's, that's her.
Go to.
Go to, that's where she feels like she can get help. So I, I bring this up as a, you know, a level of service issue, but this is, it's cool. She shows up at the fire department. They don't, in fact, the, the firemen, a couple of them know my wife, but this crew was a bunch of people and the fireman she approached, Dick, was fixed up. His friend, Hickory, Hickory, Brandon, Brandon Hickory, Hickory. So he doesn't know my wife or anything. He's, he's sitting in the kitchen by himself, she runs in with this little, at this point, I mean, dog's, dog's dead. It's like, it's not breathing, tongue's out of his mouth, I mean, it's, and he's eating his dinner. He, he drops his, his dinner and he takes the little dog and I, I talked to him after, he's like, I don't know what I was going to say. He takes the little dog and starts doing chest compressions on this little dog.
Well.
And so he gets this dog's heart beating, gets it breathing. He's, by the time I get there, he's got it laying down on the gurney and he's listening to its heart.
Mouth to mouth resuscitation.
No mouth to mouth, but I think he would have if he had. So he gets this little dog breathing and he still only had one idea what's wrong with it. And it's still out of it. Well, that little dog is like perfect, you know? I'm, I'm thinking it very least is going to have brain damage because it didn't breathe for a long time. And it's just dumb as a bus. So, no, I just, you know, that, that level of service to have that in the community that they're somewhere that, you know, something way out of the norm that that's not what these do, but that are willing to do that and capable and someone like my wife, you know, in her moment of crisis for help is way cooler. So it's like, tell the fire department.
Very.
So chief, so chiefs, I will have a neighbor who will be shooting the deer and hopefully. For the neighbor across the street.
Anything else? Okay.
I can't talk bad.
Sure.
Thank you to everyone who helped with the memorial bank program, I thought it went really well. That was you, Cherry, that was awesome.
Did a great job. Thank you. Anything else? Dean? Scott?
Marty Beaumont has accepted employment with Pleasant Grove City to be our new public works director. He will be appointed as chairman next week. And we'll start with this on June fifteenth.
Okay, sounds good.
So that's official, I mean, help people and whatever.
He will be attending strawberry days, is that correct?
His first day will be.
On start of strawberry days.
First day of strawberry. So he will be, yeah, inducted for two strawberry days, very quickly.
I'll get this ready.
Everyone else, everyone else is applying for the.
I'm meeting with public works tomorrow, all the other candidates have been notified, yes. I talked to one of them Wednesday, Friday, or Saturday.
Okay, so.
Just to announce, I do have a new part-time prosecutor, his name's Darren Johns, and we've discussed in directors meeting, we'll bring a group of newbies on the ninth, right? The ninth of June, so I'll bring him and introduce him to the council at that point. And I have, currently have a tent and I need assistance desk and I'm in the process of interviewing.
Thank you, Tina.
I'll just note that Scott should have given the opening prayer yesterday, giving whatever.
Yeah. Our finish, sun came out.
Did a great job. Thank you. Anything else? Kathy?
I'm hiring for candidate Steve, start June first.
Okay. And that's all been announced and everything? What does it end, Kathy?
June eighth.
And that's on our city website. Okay. Facebook pages. Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Eric? Kudos to Cherry, who was the singer, how you related?
Yeah, it was her daughter. Your niece, okay.
So I have a great program, Mark, but I wasn't really like the job. It's just great.
Yeah, and I like the birds, that was good.
And then I have a sort of rule for frame, maybe since we can't recognize the nineteen fifty-five, maybe you could do a float and start there, it is.
The nineteen fifty-five?
You do the nineteen fifty-five class.
I would love to invite them to.
Sixty year reunion.
I can't tell you how many class reunions are going on right now. My, the, it's the time of season for class reunions too, so maybe you count the year fifty-five through. That would be my sister. She was.
Thank you. Diana? Is that okay? Ben?
All things have been said, I took some family to the memorial program and I'm used to it because I go every year and I know how awesome it is of the Mark and Mike, especially an awesome job, but for my family to come to town to see it, they were blown away, obviously it sounded that great.
Sid? Nothing? Cindy?
Nothing.
Okay, I don't have anything either. No spots. Calendar items. So today is the twenty-sixth. So we have two more council meetings, right? And then we will have no council meeting on the sixteenth, and we'll have strawberry days. All right, anything else for anybody? Not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn.